We're now reconvening the Torrance City Council meeting of June 20, 2023, as we have been in a joint meeting with the Social Services Commission, who extend our thanks for the invitation to meet collectively tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone joining us in the council chambers, along with everyone We are now moving on to Item 2, Flag Salute and Invocation. Is there anyone in the audience who is a military veteran? Please stand or raise your hand so we may recognize you. And now, please stand, and Councilwoman Griffith will lead us in the flag salute,
Please join me as we honor our flag in our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Dear Lord, thank you for being here tonight, and we ask that you provide each of us your grace, your love, and please help us to preside over this meeting and speak words of truth I think I got the latest information that the students will not be here until 7:00 PM, so just want to set the expectation. We're gonna take Item 6 after oral communication, just so it's no surprise to everyone, and then we'll go down the rest of the agenda in its original order. I mean, we have to do Item 6 when the students are here, so we have to... Now, moving on to... I'll take a report, the city clerk, on posting the agenda.
Your Honor, the agenda was posted on June 13, with a revised agenda posted on June
I'll take a motion away from the reading of resolutions and ordinances after a numbered
Motion to wait further readings? Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
We are moving on to Item 4, Announcement. Provide background and seek direction on development of guidelines for street pole banners within the public right-of-way in Torrance, or alternatively, provide direction on amendment of the Torrance Municipal Code regarding special permits. And lastly, Item 10A, Public Works Conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution regarding City of Torrance Lighting District Number 99-1. Thank you, Your Honor. We are moving on to Item 5, Council Committee Meetings and Announcements. We'll start off with Councilwoman Lewis.
On June 12, 2023, the Strategic Plan Committee held a meeting to receive an update from city staff on several items of business. First, the committee received an update on the strategic plan, which is as follows: Number 1, a history of how 17 community volunteers reviewed the past and addressed the now and maintained an eye toward tomorrow. Number 2, an overview of the 11 strategic priorities to include a wide range of community Each priority has 57 goals with 249 sub-goals. The metrics being used are to identify, track, and measure the implementation processes of each goal and sub-goal. Secondly, the committee reviewed a strategic plan... Pardon me, strategic implementation plan using newly-acquired software called Achieve The software solves the challenges of planning and execution of long-range plans. Through the software, strategic goals will be easily tracked, edited, and viewed by their respective program leaders to ensure that the city adheres to the successful implementation of this strategic plan. When you're trying to check 57 goals and 249 sub-goals, an Excel spreadsheet just doesn't The committee concur with the staff's recommendation, which will be forwarded to the full council for consideration in a future meeting. As the Chair of the Strategic Plan Committee, I would like to thank all of the community members, city departments, and staffed involved for their work and dedication toward the The committee looks forward to bringing forth this item to council for discussion and consideration in a future meeting. And then I also have a secondary oral. I would like to remind the community that the Torrance Cultural Arts Foundation is proud to present Tokapalooza, which is happening this Saturday, June 24, from 11:00 AM to Tokapalooza is a celebration of all things art, music, food, and life performances in Torrance and the South Bay. There will be three stages in the Torrance Cultural Arts Center, which will have around-the-clock entertainment, including live bands, dance floors, dance shows, orchestra performances, takio demonstrations, magic, and more. Nearly 20 food and drink tasting stations will be set up with unlimited beverage bars. We would like to thank all of the community members, city departments, and staffed involved for their work and dedication toward the aforementioned programs. The committee looks forward to bringing forth this item to council for discussion and consideration in a future meeting. Thank you. And then I also have a secondary oral. I would like to remind the community that the Torrance Cultural Arts Foundation is proud to present Tokapalooza, which is happening this Saturday, June 24, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Tokapalooza is a celebration of all things art, music, food, and life performances in Torrance and the South Bay. There will be three stages in the Torrance Cultural Arts Center, which will have around-the-clock entertainment, including live bands, dance floors, dance shows, orchestra performances, takio demonstrations, magic, and more. Nearly 20 food and drink tasting stations will be set up with unlimited beverage bars.
as funded by SB 1; Item 9F, Community Development provide background and seek direction on development of guidelines for street pole banners within the public right-of-way in Torrance, or alternatively, provide direction on amendment of the Torrance Municipal Code regarding special permits; and lastly, Item 10A, Public Works conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution regarding City of Torrance Lighting District Number 99-1. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're moving on to Item Five, Council Committee Meetings and Announcements. We'll start off with Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 12th, 2023, the Strategic Plan Committee held a meeting to receive an update from city staff on several items of business. First, the committee received an update on the strategic plan, which is as follows. Number one, a history of how seventeen community volunteers reviewed the past and addressed the now, and maintained an eye toward tomorrow. Number two, an overview of the eleven strategic priorities to include a wide range of community elements. Each priority has fifty-seven goals with two hundred and forty-nine subgoals. The metrics being used are to identify, track, and measure the implementation processes of each goal and sub-goal. Secondly, the committee reviewed a strategic plan... Pardon me, strategic implementation plan using newly-acquired software called Achieve It. The software solves the challenges of planning and execution of long-range plans. Through the software, strategic goals will be easily tracked, edited, and viewed by their respective program leaders to ensure that the city adheres to the successful implementation of this strategic plan. When you're trying to check fifty-seven goals and two hundred and forty-nine subgoals, an Excel spreadsheet just doesn't do it. The committee concur with the staff's recommendation, which will be forwarded to the full council for consideration in a future meeting. As the Chair of the Strategic Plan Committee, I would like to thank all of the community members, city departments, and staff involved for their work and dedication toward the aforementioned programs. The committee looks forward to bringing forth this item to council for discussion and consideration in a future meeting. Thank you. And then I also have a secondary oral. I would like to remind the community that the Torrance Cultural Arts Foundation is proud to present Tokapalooza, which is happening this Saturday, June 24th, from 11:00 A.M. to 5:00 P.M. Tokapalooza is a celebration of all things art, music, food, and life performances in Torrance and the South Bay. There will be three stages in the Torrance Cultural Arts Center, which will have around-the-clock entertainment, including live bands, dance floors, dance shows, orchestra performances, takio demonstrations, magic, and more. Nearly twenty food and drink tasting stations will be set up with unlimited beverage pass that will be available for purchase for just thirty dollars. There will be... There will be so many vendors, arts and photography shows, and much, much more. This is a free community event. All you need to do is register for your free ticket at torrancearts.org/festival. Bring your e-ticket or print it out on the day of the festival, and you can enter into a raffle drawing and possibly win some fun prizes. Bring the entire family for a wonderful experience here at Torrance Cultural Arts Center. For more information and tickets, go to torrancearts.org/festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shake.
Thank you, Mayor. The Sensory Integration Education and Resource Foundation, or CERF, is a nonprofit agency based in Torrance that is dedicated to bring awareness and resources to all age groups impacted by sensory challenges. CERF also supports services for special-need families. Every year, CERF hosts a back-to-school giveaway. Now, in its twelfth year, hundreds of undeserved children and families will be given access to free school supplies thanks to this event. CERF is partnering with the Torrance Refining Company, Torrance Sam's Club, and the local Walmart to assist families in need before the fall school year begins. I'd like to get council concurrence to ask staff to bring back a formal request in the month of July for the city to collaborate with CERF on this annual back-to-school supply drive, to have council concurrence. Thank you so much.
I think you have seven thumbs up on that one. Councilman Griffiths?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A lot of stuff going on in our city. I wanted to touch on a couple of them that are important. On July 11th, which will be our next council meeting, on Tuesday evening, at that council meeting, the long-awaited follow-up to the Transportation Committee discussion on the issues surrounding our Torrance Airport will be reconvened for further discussion by our full council at that time. If the issues happening at the Torrance Airport are of concern to you, that might be an important meeting for you to pay attention to. Also, I wanted to announce briefly that this Sunday, June 25th, is Torrance Day at Dodger Stadium, and the city is offering discounted tickets to attend the game for fifteen dollars per person, a maximum of four tickets per person, and those tickets are almost sold out, and I think ticket sales stop tomorrow. So if you're interested and don't have tickets yet for Torrance Day at Dodger Stadium, please get your tickets ASAP for that. And then lastly, I wanted to mention the ongoing successful concerts in the park at Wilson Park. Between now and our next council meeting, there'll be two more concerts. On Sunday, on June 25th at 4:00 P.M. will be a free concert at Wilson Park Amphitheater, and also on Sunday, July 2nd at 5:00 P.M. will be another free concert at the Torrance Wilson Park Amphitheater. And if you're not doing anything else, I highly recommend you come down and attend. It's a fun time. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Dumay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Dumay, Fire Chief. We would like to remind the community that the Torrance Refining Company will be conducting the monthly test of the Community Alert Siren System on July 5th. That's a little bit, two weeks from now, at 11:30 A.M. As a reminder, this is only a test. The test is described as follows. A one-minute all-clear chime will precede the two-minute siren tone test. Total testing time will not exceed five minutes. It is important to note the siren tone carries a greater distance and may be heard beyond the reach of the chimes. During an actual emergency, when you hear the sirens, we encourage the community to take action, shelter, shut, and listen for instructions from the city. Shelter in place means if you are outside while at home, go inside. Close all windows, doors, and vents, and turn off your air conditioning. Listen for instructions from local cable, radio, social media sites, and through Torrance Alerts. If driving, continue to drive. Close all windows and vents, set air conditioning to recirculate, turn your radio to 1620 AM city sounds for local instructions. Listen for the chimes that signal the all-clear message to signal the emergency has concluded. For additional information regarding Torrance, the community sirens, please contact the Torrance Refining Company Community Relations at 310-212-1852. That's 310-212-1852. We also encourage the community to sign up for Torrance Alerts, which is the Torrance Emergency Notification and Warning System. For more information regarding Torrance Alerts, please go to the city's webpage. Thank you, Your Honor. And, Your Honor, with your permission, I'd like to share some information about the city's Fourth of July celebration.
You may. Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, sir. The City of Torrance will host a spectacular Fourth of July fireworks show at the Torrance Civic Center. The fireworks show takes place on Tuesday, July 4th, beginning at 9:00 P.M. The community is invited to view the shows from the following locations, which are on a first-come, first-served basis. West parking lot of the L.A. County Courthouse located at 825 Maple Avenue; the L.A. Galaxy Sports Complex located at 555 Maple Avenue. This facility will open at 7:00 P.M. for spectators. While tickets are not issued for this year's fireworks show, spectators are advised to arrive early. Guests are welcome to bring a blanket and chairs with round bottoms to sit on. Certain items are prohibited, including all food and drinks, no alcohol, no tobacco products, among other items. Street closures in and around Civic Center begins about 8:00 o'clock. Exact closures can be found online, along with a full list of prohibited items, at the website torrentca.gov/4thofjuly, all one word. The community is encouraged to subscribe to Torrance Alerts for the latest information on upcoming events, road closures, emergency notifications, and much more. Go to torrentca.gov/torrancealerts. As a reminder, Your Honor, in the community, all fireworks are illegal in the City of Torrance. We encourage the community to come view our show here at the Civic Center and let the fireworks be done by the professionals. Thank you, Your Honor.
So Chief, did you say all fireworks are illegal in the City of Torrance?
All fireworks, yes, sir, Your Honor. All fireworks are illegal in the City of Torrance.
Just want to make sure I heard it clearly.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, Donna, all the student delegates here, so we could go back to the original order. Just want the audience to know, we'll go back to have introduced the delegates instead of skipping Item Six, okay? I think we have one more announcement from Social Service Commissioner Witt.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Novella Witt, and I'm honored to serve in the Social Services Commission. I'm here to encourage the community to participate in the Social Service Commission's annual back-to-school supply drive for Torrance Unified School District, which started on June 19th. Donations will benefit students within Torrance Unified District that are experiencing homelessness and youth in foster care system. Donation drop-off of... Donation drop-off stations are located in the Torrance City Hall Lobby, the Permit Center inside Community Development, the Human Resources... Sorry, the Human Resources Building, and the Kadek Isaac Civic Center Library. We will be accepting new donation items until Friday, July 25th. Torrance Unified is seeking donations of the following items: backpacks, lunch bags, pencils, water bottles, notebooks, loose leaf paper, folders, dividers, binders, markers and highlighters, glue sticks, calculators, socks, umbrellas, scarves, gloves, hair products, and door hair accessories. For more information, please visit torrentca.gov/helpothers. You can also contact Social Services Commission at torrentca.gov or 310-618-5880 if you have any questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Witt. We're going to Community Matters, Item 6A. Since 1973, the City of Torrance has enjoyed a tremendous relationship with our sister city, Kashua, Japan. One goal of the Sister City program is to provide citizens in both countries an opportunity to discover each other's similarities and differences. In addition to promoting international friendship, the Torrance Sister City Association continues to help the city realize this goal by providing activities that foster understanding and respect for cultural diversity. Among the activities, the Student Cultural Exchange Program, which was introduced in 1974. This exceptional program affords students in Torrance the opportunity to travel to Kashua, Japan for three weeks each summer to learn firsthand about the culture and customs of Japan. Subsequently, Kashua students visit Torrance for three weeks in the summer to learn more about life here in the United States. It's now my pleasure to invite the Torrance Sister City Association President, Donna Dunlap, to share more about the exchange program, and then introduce the delegation's adult leader, who in turn will introduce this year's exchange students. Donna?
Thank you very much, Mayor Chen, and thank you, Council, for having us. Yes, we will be leaving, or they will be leaving. I would like to be included, but I'm not. They'll be leaving in three weeks and be in Kashua three weeks from today. So it's getting very close, and we're all very excited. This is our first full exchange since 2019. Last year, we had abbreviated one, and it went over quite well. And this year, we have not only our eight students going to Japan, but in two months from now, we'll be back with the eight students from Kashua visiting Torrance. So we are up and full and running after the pandemic. I'd like to thank you for your support. We've had a very busy year. You were there for our 50th anniversary in February. A lot of you attended Bunka Sai, so thank you very much for all of your support and supporting the student exchange program. Thank you. Our adult leader this year is Maureen Ortega, and she beat out all the other people that volunteered to apply for Sister City. So we're very happy to have a very enthusiastic young, sometimes thought to be one of the student delegates, but she is not. So, Maureen Ortega.
Hello. Good afternoon. Thanks for having us today. Really appreciate your time. It's actually my first trip to Japan, so I'm really looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to engaging in their culture, learning more about them, and spending time with my host family, and especially eating the food. So I'd love to introduce you to this year's delegation. Our first one here is Gia Kate. She's coming from Bishop, Montgomery.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gia, and I'm really excited to get to know my host families. I'm also really excited for the food.
Gia, after you, please stay up there, because we'll be coming down, giving you a certificate, and we'll be taking a group photo. Okay.
Next, we have Maya Cho. She's coming from West Torrance.
Hi, my name is Maya Cho. I am also very excited to eat food. I think all of us are. I've actually talked to my host family, and I'm very excited to go sightseeing with them in Tokyo and shopping.
Kimiko Evan. She's coming from North High.
Hi, I'm Kimiko. I'm also looking forward to the food, but mainly, I'm looking forward to expanding my knowledge in the language and hopefully using this as an opportunity to get closer to my extended family. Thank you.
Next, we have Jade Ling Chen Ingram. She's coming from North High.
Hi, my name is Jade Ling Chen Ingram. I'm excited to go sightseeing and getting to spend more time with my host family. Thank you.
And last, we have Victoria Arigae. She's also coming from North.
Hello, I'm Victoria. I'm really excited to meet my host family and to improve my Japanese skills.
Super. And I will... Donna, I will come down. We'll give out the certificates.
I know you all can count, and you don't see eight people here. We choose the best of the best in Torrance, and one of them is at a military Annapolis camp for us. We'll be arriving back in Torrance just before we leave. Another one of the students is in Japan with her family at the moment. She's coming back from Okinawa like two days before we leave to go to Japan. So she will be quite jet-lagged.
Let's do this. So I mean, I assume Frankel is not here.
You're right.
Okay, Gianna. Congratulations. Actually, we need to balance the court a little bit, so a few need to be on there. Jasmine. Take a look at Chen Ingram. Mika. Maya. Victoria. Okay, you get to hold it. All right. So, thank you on behalf of my colleagues in the Torrance City Council. Please know that we are very proud of all of you, and we have confidence that each of you will represent our city well when you travel to Kashua this summer. I know your trip is going to be both fun and educational, and you may gain a few pounds, based on what I heard from you. And you will make memories that will last a lifetime. Now, please join me in the final round of applause for this wonderful group of young people. You're in the middle. Donna, you and me, we are each side. We'll just tighten up a little bit. All right, guys. Ready? Three, two, one. Great. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're now moving on to Oral Communications, Number One. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comments... Reserved for comment on items under the Consent Calendar, which is Section Eight, or items that are not on the agenda. Under the Ralph and Brown Act, City Council cannot act on items raised during public comment but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. Request clarification or refer to item to staff. Speakers in the orals are limited to either Oral Communications Number One, Oral Communications Number Two, and no longer than one minute per speaker. Speakers, please turn off your cell phones when you come to the podium or to speak, or when you come to the microphone. If you're presenting material to council, please provide ten copies to city clerk. So this is a fifteen-minute total. It looks like there may be people who want to speak, and you can speak up to one minute. If everybody uses one minute, there's only fifteen people. So the clock will start when you go to the microphone. City Clerk?
Constance Sullivan.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. In October of 2017, the Cal EPA finalized a rule to require refineries that use deadly chemicals like hydrofluoric acid in their processes to do a feasibility study of switching to a safer chemical. In October of 2022, I called Cal EPA and asked where the report was, and I was told it was sent to the L.A. Coupa, and the Chair of the Coupa was none other than Chief Dumay of the Torrance Fire Department. My heart sank because the report was going to the Torrance Fire Department, which has a very cozy relationship with the Torrance Refining Company. I feared he would hide the analysis from the public, and my fears have been realized. In November, Dumay was asked about the report. He said to make a public records request, which TRAA did in March. Got no response. Made a second request. This time, we were told to request the same report of the City Council. This is a runaround. The public has a right to know this information. Please direct Dumay to release this vital information forthwith.
Thank you. Next.
Grace Lu.
The Honorable Mayor and council members, I have known some members of the LGBTQ community for decades. I have great respect for them and have maintained great relationship with them. Our country treats all people equally and values every life conceived. Pride should come from within and from knowing that each life is precious, not from external expressions of any shape or form. Respecting each other is the very foundation of our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Hill.
Hello, my name is James, and I am here to bring to the attention of the City Council the exceptional dangers of modified hydrofluoric acid. As we speak, this highly hazardous chemical is being used in large quantities at the Torrance refinery. If MHF... If MHF is released, it forms a ground-hugging toxic cloud that can envelop the community. According to the refinery's own report to the EPA, hundreds of thousands of Torrance residents are in risk, are in the risk zone of an MHF release. This puts vulnerable populations like children and the elderly at a heightened risk of death in the event of a serious accident. MHF releases have had catastrophic effects before, including incidences in China and South Korea that proved to be fatal. It has also hurt refinery workers here in the U.S. Numbers of animals and plants would die in the event of a release.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Donna Hess.
My name is Donna Heiss. I'm a North Torrance resident of about 50 years. I'm here to ask the council, the Torrance City Council, to direct Chief Dumay to release the HCA for Torrance Refining Company. The citizens of Torrance have a right to know if it's possible for the Torrance Refining Company to change to a safer catalyst. The report was due in October 2022. TRAA and other groups have filed various requests, including public document request, PDR, to see the report, but so far, we've had no response from the chief. We really would like to see the report. I think our safety demands it. Thank you.
Cliff Heiss.
I live in North Torrance. I'd like to see our local refinery switch their alkylate from hydrogen fluoride to a safer alternative. When I mention this to other people, they often say, "Well, the refinery was here first." This is true. However, hydrogen fluoride was not. Most of Torrance was developed in the 1950s. Hydrogen fluoride was introduced into the refinery in the 1960s. They brought this dangerous chemical into our neighborhood without telling anyone. When I moved into Torrance from Hawthorne in the 1970s, I had no idea I was moving into a hazardous zone. I thought the main hazard was the extreme flammability of the products produced there. Had I known of the poisonous nature of the alkylate, I would have thought twice about moving so close to the refinery. Now, there are 147,000 people in Torrance, all in danger, all in the danger zone. Why hasn't the HCA report been made public?
Thank you, sir.
G. Ing.
So I'm here to support releasing the HCA report. We need to know what the analysis is so we can see if it really is safe or not. Tomorrow is the fourth anniversary of the Philadelphia explosion, and so, like they said here, it looked like a nuclear bomb went off, and that one threw bus-sized things hundreds across the river, landing at over 100 miles per hour. This is a really great risk. I think it's time to address basically safer alternatives, and I think that the chief should release this information so the people of Torrance can study it and analyze it and see if it's true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Stephen Goldsmith.
Speaking as president of Torrance Refinery Action Alliance, our website is info@traa website, and you can get emails there. As you know, for eight years, the community, supported by thousands of citizens, large demonstrations, hundreds of elected officials, large, local, and national organizations, unions, top scientists, and regulators have tried to bring about conversion from HF to a safer process. The refinery operates as safely as they can, but the highest safety is to change the chemical. Now state regulations require them to submit an analysis of the threat and the alternatives. Why is this report hidden from the public? Is a true analysis that could stand up to a third-party audit made by the refinery? Many of these misstatements on the refinery's websites would be exposed. Everybody knows it's too dangerous. There are alternatives, and everybody knows, they just don't want...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Sir, your time is up.
Isabel Balboa.
First of all, happy pride, especially to those who do not celebrate. My name is Isabel Balboa, and my family and I live within walking distance from the ticking time bomb known as Torrance Refinery. This city council has been asked countless times to protect their citizens from the preventable catastrophe that is a release of modified hydrofluoric acid, or MHF. After years of inaction from our city leaders, I still wonder how the Torrance City Council will react when there is an accidental release of this deadly chemical, and people are injured and die from something the city council could have prevented. I imagine the somber faces and endless excuses. Even small releases of this chemical have severely injured workers in Texas, Louisiana, and Washington, and still, our leaders do nothing. The citizens of Torrance demand that the city council and fire chief, who I'm glad is here, release documents showing whether or not a safer alternative for MHF can be adopted.
Thank you.
Mary Pope.
Hello, I'm going back in time a little bit, but I'm going back to September 2019, an article from the L.A. Times, "Air Quality Management District Board Kills Regulation of Dangerous Refinery Acid in Favor of Oil and Industry Plan." And the article indicates, "Air quality regulators on Friday killed a years-long push for stronger regulation of a dangerous acid used at two South Bay refineries that has frightened many neighbors, voting instead to accept a voluntary oil industry pledge to enhance safety measures." The decision by the South Coast Air Quality Management District Governing Board came just one week after two refineries offered a way to avoid tougher restrictions. They sent letters offering to install improved safety systems in the coming years if regulators ended their pursuit of a rule or agreement to reduce the risk of a catastrophic release of MHF. So I'm concerned because this was voluntary, and...
Your time is up.
Margaret Heslinger.
Yeah.
Bill Reynolds.
If you want to get more of your messages through, please end and let the next person come up. Thank you.
Speaking as a private citizen, we call upon the Torrance Fire Department chief to see to it that the public data request for the hazard control analysis is honored ASAP. The runaround that TRAA has received is ridiculous and outrageous. The buck has been passed from the Governor's Interagency Task Force to the Certified United Program Agency, of which the Torrance Fire Department is a member, to the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, to Cal EPA, to the Department of Toxic Substance Control. Stop the madness. The hard-working, solid citizens of Torrance and the South Bay that are supporters of TRAA, and our aerospace engineers, among other responsible occupations, that are productive taxpayers, have had enough and deserve better treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person.
Jane Afonso.
I'm Jane Afonso from Redondo Beach, and I urge all of you council members to call on the chief and the refineries to release the report. You might, like me, might be curious why they haven't released it. It could allow the community to know whether the refinery has been hiding its ability to convert to a safer alternative than MHF. What are they hiding? Please use your power to demand transparency, to hold the chief and the refineries to account. And as an aside, I'm offended that the Torrance Refinery is accusing residents of stirring up trouble when they're just asking for transparency. A lot of people in the South Bay are worried about the safety of neighboring refineries. Why are the refineries not being good neighbors?
Thank you. Next speaker.
Stephanie Elwood.
Hi, I'd like to encourage you to keep in effect the current policy on flying flags on city-owned property. Our national flag represents all of us. The state flag represents all of us.
Ms. Elwood, actually, that's an agenda item nine F later, so this is for non-agenda. Just want to make sure. I'm not cutting you off so that you can speak later.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Susan Niemeyer.
Good evening, everyone. My comment is about proclamations, not about the banners. I would like to suggest that the city have a commission, create a list of proclamations that will be observed throughout the year. I think we should look at the federal and state proclamations. I feel that we have a hit and miss. We did do African-American History Month, Women's History Month, and Asian-American Pacific Islander Month. However, we skipped over Arab-American Heritage Month in April, Jewish-American Heritage Month in May, Pride Month in June, Hispanic-Latino Heritage Month in September was not celebrated last year, Native American Heritage Month in November was not celebrated last year, and most importantly, yesterday was Juneteenth, which is a very important holiday. It's a new holiday, and Torrance as a city did nothing to celebrate Juneteenth Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends our oral communications. This evening, we're moving on to item eight, Consent Calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items listed on the consent calendar? Councilman Griffiths.
Yes, please. Eight D is in David, eight J is in John, and eight P is in Paul.
All right. Anyone else from the council want to pull any other items? City Attorney.
Yes, Your Honor, Patrick Sullivan, City Attorney. I don't actually want to pull an item, but just item eight E is an item that there was a miscommunication amongst a couple departments, and the attached amendment does not reflect the recommendation. So the recommendation is just to extend the term and not add any funds. The attached item adds funds. So if the council approves eight E, according to the recommendation, we will modify the agreement so it reflects the council approval, just to extend the term and not actually add funds.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other members of council want to pull any other items? If not, I'll take a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar with exception of eight D, eight J, and eight P, and as clarified by City Attorney Sullivan, eight E.
Motion to approve all items in section eight, with the exception of D is in David, J is in John, P is in Paul, with the amendment of item eight E as suggested by Attorney Sullivan.
I second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
All right, I think the first one up is item eight D. Councilman Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Eight D was an item requesting grant funding from our Sister City Association for $1,500. I noted in the agenda item that their original request was for $2,000, and I was just wondering if the council has in their discretionary fund an additional $500. I'd like to give them the full amount that they requested and use the balance above and beyond their budget from our remaining budget, which expires in July anyway, or end of this month, if that's okay with the council. I don't know if we have, I want to confirm, though, that we have the funds in the council discretionary fund. Anyone know?
Your Honor, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office, if the council does not have any remaining funds, staff is confident we can identify additional funding needed and bring forward a Q1 amendment to reflect your action this evening. That is your direction.
So with that, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this item for a total of $2,000, and that's my motion on this item.
Actually, I just want to make sure I clarify. Actually, do we, is that the correct motion, or we actually accept this and come back with a Q1 amendment? I just want to make sure.
Your Honor, again, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office, if this is the council's direction to appropriate $2,000, we could reflect that in the Q1 amendment, but I'm confident we could provide the additional funding now.
Okay, I got it.
I'll second.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Santana, do we know why Torrance Sister Cities Association did not put through the grant for the entire $5,000 that they could have put it through for?
Councilwoman, I'm not sure about the $5,000 that they could have secured, but I'll defer to our Community Services Director, John LaRocque, to speak more to this.
Good evening, Councilwoman Lewis. Traditionally, the city has budgeted a $1,500 grant for the Sister Cities Association, so that's why that was what the proposal was provided to you this evening. Their initial request was for two, but the budget reflected $1,500, as has been traditional. I'm not sure what $5,000 you're referring to.
Well, it says the total amount requested from the city not to exceed $5,000, so I'm just assuming that they could have increased it if they wanted to on this grant application, as long as it doesn't exceed $5,000. Item E on the applications, the summary application.
Councilwoman, that may have to do with just the format of the letter. That's not specific to this specific program.
That's formatting on the application, Councilmember, not necessarily entry by the Sister Cities Association.
I realize that. I realize that, but in the past, has the Sister Cities asked for more, or the limit's always been $1,500?
To my experience, it's been $1,500. I don't have the recollection as to what they've asked for annually, although I believe the Chair of TSCA is still present in the room, so if Ms. Dunlap wants to come up, she can certainly speak to that if you wish.
That would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Hello again. So we have, yes, traditionally, for decades, gotten $1,500, and we now see the rising cost of things, and the programs that we have could help to have a little bit more, so I just thought I would try to ask for $2,000 instead of $1,500. I didn't know about the $5,000.
Maybe I read too much. I mean, it's an incredible program, and I would love to see it expanded, and I would love to see if we could come up with something that exceeds $2,000, because it is such a wonderful program for our community and our high schoolers. So I don't know if that's something that we could consider.
Your Honor, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office, it's certainly within the council's purviews to consider that, but I would recommend that the council consider, if you are interested in increasing their allocation, up to what they originally asked for, and then staff and the association can work together to develop a refined program for any subsequent years that itemizes what the additional requested funds would go toward, so that way council can make an informed decision on the additional allocations.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I appreciate it, too. Thank you.
Okay, I think Councilman Griffith is asking, we can up it to $2,000, I believe.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to make this so complicated, but yeah, the request is for, what they asked for is $2,000. That's my motion.
I think Councilwoman Tucci second that.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Okay, TSCA, you just got to raise. Councilman Griffith, you're on item eight J.
Thank you again, Mayor. This is an item requesting money to paint the railroad bridge that crosses over Hawthorne Boulevard near 190th Street. And my question to staff on this one is, why are we spending city money to paint the metro-owned bridge?
Councilman Craig Bilisarian, I believe the condition of the bridge is something that is a concern to the city and the aesthetics, and when we approached the owner of the bridge, they had no money or no plans to do anything about it. they had no money or no plans to do anything about it. And so, since it's on a major corridor in the city of Torrance, carries about 70,000 vehicles a day, they come both to and from the 405. It was proposed as a land management signing fee project that was previously identified by the council as a, as a priority. So this is the follow-up step to where we've already gone out to bid, and we're just asking for consideration toward the contract.
No, and I appreciate getting the bridge cleaned up. It is important to our city, and it is a shame that Metro won't pay to, to do that. What I would maybe like to request, if I can get concurrence with my colleagues, is that we make an additional written request after this is, I'm assuming gets approved, to Metro, saying that we would like them, at whatever point they do have money available, to refund us for our expenditure.
We can certainly follow up with something in writing and also meetings to request that.
I think that's only fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the item basically says that we're, you know, fixing it up, painting it up. Is there any artistic element to it, like, you know, welcome to the city of Torrance, that kind of stuff?
In addition to painting the overhead structure a Torrance blue, and then the lower concrete a gray, there's a future plan to put the city logo on the center portion of the bridge, or potentially the outer portion that's not distracting to drivers, but would have prominence from a city logo.
And how often do we need to, if we were to do this, how long does it last? I mean, 10 years, 15 years?
There's obviously a warranty period for the labor and materials, and then at some point, it would, that would expire. I believe it would probably 10 to 15 years, maybe more. Without, I don't think that information's in the item. But beyond that, it really is the responsibility of Metro, and I think to Councilman Griffiths' point, is we can follow up with them to make sure that it's maintained in the future, because it really is something that they've let go, and it's, the city has really been the initiator of this. So it will have a benefit to Torrance, but I agree that we should be seeking some type of reimbursement.
Since we're, I'm sorry about that. Since we're, may, you know, approve it, or may, maybe not, but if, if we do approve it, I'd like to use the opportunity that since we're paying for it, is to really put an artistic element to it, so that people can, you know, maybe take pictures of it and promote it and say, wow, look at that bridge. I've never seen one like that. You know, instead of just doing it gray and more blue and gray, you know. I mean, pretty, I'm sure it'll be much nicer than what's there now, but I think it might, I don't know, just do, just a thought to maybe put some artistic look to it, something that's more reflective of the character of Torrance, maybe. I don't know.
Yes, Councilman, that's something we can explore. I, I think what we need to consider when we have that discussion is, first of all, the abutment of the structure would be owned by Metro, and any artistic application, whether it be paint or something of that nature, would then fall under the city to maintain, because it's not part of the service of, of the rail. So that would be something that the city would have to consider for what we would like to do, if we would like to do something, and then ongoing maintenance to program in some type of an operating or capital budget. But that can certainly enter the conversation.
I mean, it's such a centerpiece to the city. I mean, I don't think there's anybody that comes through Torrance that doesn't go through that bridge one, one, one way or another. So, all right, thank you.
Your Honor, again, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office, just for awareness, this was something that we like to complement Public Works. It took quite a bit of effort to secure the ability to actually upgrade the, the crossing, so much so that they created a template that could be applied to other crossings. And in the near future, there will be a subsequent item associated with the other railroad crossing on Crenshaw. So this was something that was very important to the city manager, that we do everything we can to improve the aesthetics of these legacy facilities and dress them up as individuals come to and through our city.
Good to hear that. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Craig, and Public Works. I know that as I read the item, you guys sort of did it on the cheap as much as possible, because you're only doing the part that the visitors could see visibly, and then on the inside, we'll let Metro take care of the stuff that visitors don't see, so appreciate it. Councilman Griffiths?
There's a question from another councilman.
Councilman Kaji?
Thank you, Mayor. For staff, do we need to provide prior written notice to Metro in order to paint the bridge, and would Metro have any recourse in the event they don't like our gray and blue?
No, sir. We've actually obtained permission to do that. We have obtained a permit already, and the only thing we'd have to coordinate with is the BNSF Railway, who operates rail traffic there for flagging to make sure there's safety for the construction workers.
So I do have one more question. You mentioned another bridge in Torrance. Is that also owned by Metro?
It's along the same rail line to the south, so it's the one that goes over Crenshaw Boulevard. It's the same owner.
All right. So I will go ahead and, I mean, I really appreciate staff's desire to improve the looks of our city, and I wish Metro would take the same initiative. So I do make the motion that we, we approve this item and concur with the staff's recommendation, and in addition, then, to add that follow-up letter to Metro requesting that they, they take some responsibility and, and provide funding in reimbursement to us when they have funding available for a maintenance that they should be doing. That's my motion.
I second.
Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
And the final consent calendar item is eight P. Councilman Griffiths?
Thank you again, Mayor. Eight P is in regards to issues in support of our animal control program and funding for county services in relation to animal control, and that raised some questions that I appreciate staff answering for me and are supplemental on this item. And one of the things that I noticed in the supplemental is that our licensing revenue has been steadily decreasing year after year after year. Yet, I have, well, I don't have any facts to substantiate this, but I suspect that the number of animals licensed, or animals in our city has actually increased, but yet our revenue is decreasing. I'm just wondering, what mechanism is in place, or, or is there any mechanism in place to audit animal licensing in our city?
Good evening, Councilmember Griffiths, Shane Lee, Administrative Analyst, Community Services Department, and the rest of the members of the City Council. To your question, the city, the Community Services Department has been operating on a 50% capacity for our animal control program. So currently, we have one lead animal control officer, and we are currently in the process of hiring another employee for that position, so effectively we'd double our ability to outreach the community, have better compliance and education, so that we could have, we'll be able to be more on top of educating pet owners to license their dogs.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent for us, considering our increased costs in relating to animal control, that we, we do some enforcement of our rules regarding to pet licensing. And I don't mean to impose on our pets, but there is a responsibility people have when they own pets, and one of those responsibilities is pay the required licensing, which then we, as a city, have to pay for different services related to those pets, including helping to find your pets when they're lost, et cetera, et cetera. So I would certainly like to request informally that we, especially once staffing has achieved, that we make a higher effort in enforcement of unlicensed pets, and that, otherwise, if there's no other questions, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve this item and concur with the recommendation.
I think we have two more questions. Councilwoman Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. My question to you, $335,000 is a significant amount of money to pay for the county, when I'm hearing from some, some of our residents that either they can't get animal control services, or when they try to go to our designated shelter, it's either closed or not accepting pets, and they only have specific amount of hours to which they operate. So I, I'm familiar from how it was when Torrance had a full-on animal control program out of the police department, and, and that response, depending on availability, was almost immediate. Now, I'm hearing it's nonexistent. How do you think that this contract will go to improving the services to our residents who are, who, if they find a pet during the walk on the beach, they have nowhere to take them, and they've, they've been told, just release them back in the street, and that doesn't sit well with me?
Thanks, Councilmember Lewis. John LaRocque, Community Services Department. So this item is not to add or modify any of the services we currently receive from LA Animal Control. It's merely to initiate a PO increase to afford it through the end of the contract term in June of '24. That said, the city does have resources up to a point to receive lost animals, kennel them, and so forth. We typically kennel animals up to three days. If not claimed at that point, whether, whether they are not chipped or not claimed, we then refer them to the county shelter. The county shelter is a 24/7 facility, and it should not be refusing anyone for service, whether that's a medical emergency for an animal, or a sheltering, or a surrender of an abandoned or lost pet. So if the public is experiencing that at the county, they should reach out to us so that we can assure we're receiving the services that we are paying a premium for with the county. I'll add that prior to the end of the county contract, we'll be shopping for potential à la carte services through other providers, more locally based, so that we can maximize our dollars, not spend as much money on the county, and provide better service to the community based on having a fully-staffed animal control program.
Okay, because I was one of those people who tried to call animal control and was told they can't accept the animal where we found one, and it was actually members of the community that helped find one of the services that you referred to, that'll say, hey, we'll, we'll come and foster the, the little lost puppy. Almost kept him, he was so cute. I hope he made his way home. But...
Was that communication to Torrance Animal Control or LA County Animal Control?
To the Carson Shelter.
Oh, really? Okay. That's, that's very disappointing. I'm sorry to hear that.
Who was closed and said that they would not accept it, and...
Was that during the pandemic?
No, this was two months ago.
Then I have no excuse for them. I'm sorry.
Right, and, and you shouldn't have any excuse, but my thing is if we're, if we're paying $335,000 for a 24-hour service, then that's what it is, 24-hour service.
Agreed.
So I'll be looking back for that item to come back to see where we are, because that's not the way we should be spending our money, and when our residents can't get the service that we're promised. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, yeah, most of the questions, actually, I had, they actually already been answered, but would you, would you consider our, the Torrance program a no-kill? When, if, if a pet is picked up, are we considered a no-kill program?
We do not euthanize any animals that are in our care.
That are in our care, but once, I mean, once they're transferred to LA County, that...
They have their own shelter policies that they follow under Title 10.
That's something that kind of, it really bugs me, because, I mean, these are, some of these are perfectly healthy animals that are being put down. Okay, yeah, like I said, most of my questions were already answered. Thank you.
Councilman Shay?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. LaRocque. I think we spoke about this briefly, also about this item. Piggyback on Councilwoman Lewis and also other colleagues, do you get any report from county, how many calls they received, how many they're served, or what was the outcome for all of these things?
When we use their services, we do get reports on a monthly basis for what they provide. Our interactions with them are minimal to date, just based on the fact that reunification has been, is typically handled within a three-day period. They are mostly handling when we bring a wild animal to them, which has been injured. They care for that animal, if it's, if it can be rescued, or they euthanize it. This is non-pets, like skunks and possums and things, that are, or birds that are found in the wild by our staff and brought to the shelter. That's required under Title 10. But the county can give us any other data you wish to see mined and provided in the future.
Okay, I'd like to see that when you get a chance, but thanks.
I think we have a go-back from Councilwoman Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one more quick question. If a resident finds themselves in a position where they've come across a lost pet, and they are being told by whomever that they can't come and pick up the pet, what would be the next steps?
Well, the Torrance Police Department has the ability to contact animal control and conduct a call-out maneuver. So whoever is on duty, whether that's daytime working hours or overnight, a call-out can be initiated for the pet to be picked up by animal control or a park ranger.
Okay, and that's 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
That's right.
You shouldn't say, let it go back out into the streets?
That's correct.
For a re-embankment. Okay.
That's correct.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. I'll take the motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make the motion to concur with the staff recommendation, but I do want to make one addition to that, and that would be to have staff bring back an item after the first of the year in, in early 2024, for an update on the animal control program.
I second that entire motion.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item nine, Administrative Matters. Item nine A from Public Works is their staff presentation.
Yes. Good evening. Bedover Street from Public Works. Item nine A is a request to adopt a resolution that identifies the project for fiscal year 2023 to 2024 that will be funded by SB 1, which is the Road Repair and Accountability Act. The project that has been identified to use the SB 1 funding is the Residential Pavement Improvement Program I-159. The city of Torrance is projected to receive an estimated $3,558,722 in revenue from this funding source. This revenue is generated by gasoline and diesel taxes, as well as vehicle registration fees. The recently adopted capital budget already approved an estimated 1.3 of these SB 1 funds to be appropriated to the project, so an additional appropriation of $2258,722 is also requested as part of this item in order to fully utilize the projected amount from the state for this fiscal year. These funds will be applied towards street improvements in residential areas to perform necessary pavement, curb, gutter, and sidewalk repairs. Thank you.
All right. I think we do have a council, Councilman Griffiths does have a question.
I'm full of them today. I'm, I'm in support of this item, but I just want to make a comment, and sorry if it comes across the wrong way, but I really, despite the way the state titles their, their bills, calling this a nice bill, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, when it really is just the gas tax bill. And I just, let's call them what they are, and that's what this is. But if we got the money, let's spend it on, on our city, and I, I support the, support the agenda item.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I don't see any. Do any members of the public wish to speak? You have one minute per speaker.
Hello, this is Andy Porkchop. I just would like to say, you know, I love SB 1, because this way, the government and the local governments cannot pocket the money and use it for other purposes. And by the way, that's good for us, Mr. Griffith. And last time, when you approved the road improvement in my area, Newton Street was supposed to be in it. What happened with the money? Who pocketed that money? Newton Street is not paved. There is 12-inch weed growing on the middle of the road. 12-inch weed growing in the middle of the court, road. Where is the money? Where is the money that was supposed to be done a year ago? A year ago. That was money for it. It was supposed to be done, and no, no paving happened. No slurry coating, no nothing. But the money...
Thank you, Mr. Porkchop. Anyone else in the public wants to speak on this item?
James Henry, I want to congratulate Councilman Griffiths. I'm pointing out that this is actually the gas tax money, and not what they say it is. I had no idea it was the gas tax money. So I, thank you, Councilman Griffiths.
Thank you. Miss, sir, anyone else from the public wish to speak on this particular item? All right. City Clerk, may I have a number and title, please?
Yes, Your Honor, this is Resolution Number 2023-70, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year 2023-24 as funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
Motion to concur and adopt Resolution Number 2023-70.
I'll second.
Start voting.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are now moving on to Item 9B from Public Works. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Shin Fu Kao from Public Works. Item 9B is a recommendation to approve a sequel categorical exemption, to approve the plans and specifications for the Anza Avenue Rehabilitation Traffic Signal Improvements I-144. Approve the First Amendment to Funding Agreement with the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority to extend the term of the agreement to June 30th, 2024. Appropriate $507,000 from the Citywide Traffic Signal Improvements T-171 and $44,800 from a private developer deposit to I-144. Waive a minor irregularity in the bid submitted of the apparent low bidder and award a Public Works agreement to Select Electric of Vista, California, in the amount of $1,425,745 and authorize a 10% contingency of 142,575 for construction of the I-144 project. The Anza Avenue Rehabilitation involves the repair of Anza Avenue from Delamo Boulevard to Sepulveda Boulevard. The project is being separated into a traffic signal component and a roadway component. The traffic signal component is being awarded tonight in advance of the roadway component because signals are the first order of work and because signal poles have a minimum 20-week lead time for delivery. The traffic signal work includes signal pole and mast arm replacements, signal head replacements, pedestrian push-button upgrades, installation of video detection systems, and other associated work. It is recommended that the construction contract for the signal work be awarded to Select Electric Inc., whose bid was about 3% lower than the engineer's estimate. This item also recommends approving an amendment to the funding agreement with Metro to extend the term to June 2024 as Metro is providing a portion of the funding for the signal work. Finally, it should be noted that the design of the associated roadway work is complete and is anticipated to be advertised for construction bids in July. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Do anyone from the council have questions? I don't see any. Do any members of the public wish to comment on this particular item?
Yeah, this is Porkchop again. I'm very happy you're spending money on the lights, and I wish you could spend more on the roadway there because I'm paying taxes with my gas guzzler and I'm going home from this meeting on Anza, and, and I don't know how Matucci go home with the Topolino, but, you know, luckily he doesn't lose a wheel, you know? It's very shaky, at least I don't fall asleep. So it's again, that's money from the government. I like the United States of government. The problem is with the local government, what they spend the money on. So it's very good to spend the money on lighting and road repair. Thank God, SB 1, and whatever the money come for this one, because Torrance doesn't pay for anything unless somebody pays for it, or we pay, pay for painting the railroad bridge. My house need a paint job too. Anytime, anytime, you can come over, you know the egg mucks.
Your time is up, sir. Just let us know when it's painted, we'll come by and visit. Anyone else from the public who wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll take a motion to concur with recommendations of Public Works Director.
So move.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are now moving on to Item 9C from the Finance Department. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, sir, it's good evening. Jason Ishiama with the Finance Department. Item 9C is recommending approval of renewing the city's liability insurance coverage from Public Risk Innovation Solutions Management, PRISM, Public Risk Sharing Pool, at a premium not to exceed $2,956,404 for a one-year period. This liability coverage is important to the city because it provides financial protection in case the city needs to pay large claims or lawsuits. The policy provides limits of up to $20 million per occurrence with a self-insured retention of $5 million. Coverage, specific coverage elements include law enforcement liability, bodily injuries and property damage, auto liability and public officials' errors and omissions. In order to help ensure the city is getting the required coverage at the cost-effective rate, the staff conducted rigorous renewal process, which took many months to conduct. The renewal process included a few things. First, reviewing and auditing the city's lawsuits data before the submission. Accurate data is important for the renewal process. Verifying the financial stability of the risk-sharing pool by reviewing PRISM's audited financial statements. Staff concluded that the pool is stable and quality risk-sharing pool accredited by California Association of Joint Powers Authorities, or CAGAPA. Third, through our Insurance Brokers Alliance, we conducted a marketing in other private insurance markets for carriers who might be willing to write business with the city's risk profile. The results concluded that it is currently very difficult to find private insurance carriers that is willing to write public entities at this time. Some of the reasons include the state of litigation in the United States. It is, the frequency is increasing, and the magnitude is also increasing for lawsuits against public entities, and thus carriers are scared of writing business in California. And finally, we, we also reviewed the appropriateness of the $20 million coverage limit. We analyzed our current lawsuits within the city's current inventory and determined that this, at this time, there are no claims with exposures that would potentially pierce the $20 million limit. In conclusion, we are recommending approval of this renewal of the city's liability coverage through PRISM. Thank you, and myself and Alliance, our insurance brokers, are also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I don't see any. Do any members of the public wish to speak on this item?
It's Porkchop again. I'd just like to put my two cents in. This is a good one. I would double down on this because just like he said, you're lucky if you get insurance with these kind of people who work for Torrance, you know? And that's a, that's a sad thing also, the city manager never have any announcement, never tell us what's happening, and I accidentally noticed that $10 million so far you paid out in lawsuits in this year, you know? Nobody talks about it, you know? But we are a great city, we making money, the money rolling in, and here you go, we have to have insurance because our workers, because our workers, you know, cost us money, you know? A little paint, spray paint here, a little spray paint there, you know, a little lawsuit here, a little lawsuit there, the city, city taxpayer pay for it. So it's a good thing if we have insurance for this, you know? You should be insured, every one of you, and me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item?
So in this item, you're talking about including law enforcement liability. Here's a concept, hold your police accountable, and you won't have all these lawsuits. Because let's remember, not only did the Torrance Police Department kill Christopher DeAndre Mitchell, but also Michelle Shirley, and Asa Dolak, and Charles Wang, and DeAndre Ross, and they've also been involved in a messaging scandal that all of you refused to hold these cops accountable. In fact, you gave these cops raises and awards. You allowed Brian Kawamoto, who shot Christopher DeAndre Mitchell with a beanbag gun after he was already dead, to be in city council chambers and brutalize somebody who was in these city council chambers as an attendee. And then you got sued for that! It's almost like if you hold cops accountable, you won't have to pay out all this money. But you don't think about it in those terms because you don't care about black people. Black lives matter. Chris DeAndre Mitchell, say his name.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item?
All lives can't matter until black lives matter.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the audience, well, you know, let's make all comments addressed to us in orderly fashion. Thank you, thank you very much. If there's no other comments from the public, I'll take a motion to concur with recommendation of Finance Director and approve the renewed excess liability coverage and authorize the Finance Director to execute the policy.
I move to approve Item 9C.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are moving on to Item 9D from the City Clerk. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Your Honor, Rebecca Poyet, City Clerk. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the City of Torrance Conflict of Interest Code and repeal Resolution Number 2022-98. The California Political Forum Act requires the city to update its Conflict of Interest Code every two years, which we did last fall. However, due to some reorganizations within some of the departments, it is necessary for us to update the code earlier than September 2024. Some of the changes are removing HR from underneath the city manager's office, it is now its own independent department, updated engineering technician titles, updated titles in the Communication and Information Technology Department, added Assistant Police Chief and Administrative Services Manager under Police, and added the SST Committee to the filing requirement. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? I don't see any. Do any members of the public wish to speak on this particular item? If not, City, that's okay, sir. City Clerk, may we have a number and title, please?
Yes, Your Honor, this is Resolution Number 2023-71, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, amending the city's Conflict of Interest Code, which incorporates by reference the Fair Political Practices Commission's standard model Conflict of Interest Code and repealing Resolution Number 2022-98.
Move to adopt the Resolution 2023-71.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We're moving on to Item 9E from the City Managers. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council, Danny Santana again with the City Manager's Office. Item 9E is a request to adopt a resolution approving a grant of easement for the natural gas distribution line and service facilities on city-owned property located at the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Crenshaw Boulevard. This is more formally known as the Rolling Hills Plaza Shopping Center. There is a restaurant pad that is being developed on the north side of PCH near the intersection of Airport Drive, and the gas service line is needed in order to provide utility service for the restaurant operation. It's a Starbucks that's intended to be the user there, and this is simply providing the easement that SoCal Gas requires in order to deliver that utility service. Staff is available for any questions.
All right, that's a Starbucks, I'm going to go on the Old Friar Tux location, is that right?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Okay. Any member of the council have questions? If not, I think. Go ahead, sir.
I'm actually positive on this one, this is a good one because that, what is this name of this guy? Lacazette? I, I don't know if I can pronounce his name. He's raking in millions of dollars a year there. You know Lacazette? You know, he lives in Rolling Hills, you cannot even get into that city. I was there once, but you know, you don't have to. I can tell you what's there. But Lacazette makes big money, and I know this doesn't cost money, but they need the gas, you know? And this is a good one, because Lacazette makes money, a lot, and City of Torrance make a little bit. You know what I mean? I studied the Torrance Center, you know Lacazette makes $7 million a year, City of Torrance, $700,000. That's a, that's a good thing, you know? Next time a deal comes up like that, I would like to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who wish to speak on this item? I'm sure Mr. Lacazette is very happy at your compliments. If not, City Clerk, may we have a number and title, please?
Your Honor, this is Resolution Number 2023-72, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute and the city clerk to attest to a grant of easement to Southern California Gas Company for natural gas distribution line and service facility.
Motion to concur and adopt Resolution Number 2023-72.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are now moving on to Item 9F from Community Development. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Your Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, Michelle Ramirez, Community Development Director. At the City Council Meeting of June 6, 2023, staff was directed to bring back an item regarding the development of a policy for street pole banners within the public right of way. There are currently 10,066 light poles in the city, of which 9,988 are owned by Southern California Edison, otherwise known as SCE, and 78 are owned by the city. SCE has provided guidelines for placing signs or banners on its light poles, as well as a type of allowable signs and banners, which include non-electrified traffic regulating signs, American flags, neighborhood watch signs, and city-sponsored events such as the Hometown Heroes banners and the Armed Forces Day parade announcements. As to the 78 city light poles, the Torrance Municipal Code, or TMC, currently requires a special permit to be obtained to place a sign or banner on a city light pole. The TMC indicates that nothing shall prevent the City Council from issuing a permit for, and I quote, "any civic, patriotic, or special event of general public interest taking place within the boundaries of the city when it is determined that that same will not be material detrimental to the public welfare, interests, or safety, nor interests to adjacent property or improvements," end of quote. However, the TMC does not define the terms civic, patriotic, or general public interest. Accordingly, these terms are subject to interpretation. This is a cause for concern when developing guidelines because the city must comply with the First Amendment when issuing a special permit for a sign or banner. If it is the desire of the council to move forward with the development of guidelines, staff would suggest following the same guidelines as already developed by SCE, as this would keep the guidelines for placing signs or banners on any light poles within the city consistent and avoid any potential allegation of First Amendment violations. A second option for the council to consider is to prepare an amendment to the Torrance Municipal Code defining the terms civic, patriotic, or general public interest. Under this proposed scenario, the city would define the term so that this, that only city-sponsored event signs and banners would be allowed, thereby again avoiding any potential allegations of First Amendment violations. It should be noted that tonight's discussion is limited to signs and banners on light poles. There have been some questions as related to hanging banners from awnings that intrude into the public right of way. Similar to awnings, planter boxes, access ramps, and street furnitures placed within the city's public right of way, this can be handled by staff administratively through an encroachment permit. That concludes staff's presentation. If any member of the City Council have questions, both the city attorney and I would be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council members? I don't see any at this moment. Oh, oh, it just came up. Councilman Shay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question to clarify, you said there are 73 poles that we, 78, yes. So are they scattered, or are there in one area? Do you have any information?
Councilman Craig Bilizerian, so Delamo Boulevard to the west of Crenshaw Boulevard up to Madrona is a portion of city-owned lights. We also have another section on the south side of Delamo near West High, another section on Palis Verdes Boulevard, and on Van S, west side, north of Torrance Boulevard.
They're scattered, they're not in one area. Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, do members of the public wish to speak on this item? Just remember, you have one minute per speaker, and.
Your Honor, we have some signed up.
Oh, yeah, the, the City Clerk has people who signed up, so she will call them up from those who signed up first, and afterwards, those who have not signed up will call them.
Irene Kay. Helen Lindberg.
What I would suggest is if. What I would suggest is if maybe the clerk call out three names at a time so you can get in the queue. Go ahead.
It's Helen Lindberg, and I support the more restrictive policy of the city, state, and American flags and city events. If we expand to include all types of interest groups, then we're also excluding others, and we have to determine how do we make those decisions. If we keep it to the city, the state, and American flags, then we are inclusive of everybody.
Thank you. I'm just gonna ask, I'm just ask everyone, let's hold the applause down, otherwise, because there's a lot of speakers coming up. We just want to give you guys efficiently and speak and allow the person to finish their talk. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Irene Kay, longtime Torrance resident. And I concur with what she said. The banners raised should be inclusive of all people, not a lifestyle. I suggest red, white, and blue as an inclusive color scheme that aligns with our country's flag. And I want to just take this opportunity to commend the council for how you... In every meeting, I watch you on, online, how you endure with dignity and grace in the face of unnecessary rudeness and foul language that happens quite frequently. And I also want to commend our police officers, who are some of the finest in California. Torrance is a great city because of the dedication, service, and bravery of our policemen and policewomen. We are grateful for their risking their lives daily to keep our city safe and orderly. We citizens of Torrance enjoy and thrive because of law and order maintained by Torrance Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll again remind you, please do not talk over the speaker because you're disrupting the meeting. This, please take this as the warning. City Clerk?
Nicole Free.
Pride. It's become a hot topic lately. I would rather be humble than have pride, but that's another topic. What I do know is that a month dedicated to the celebration of one group's sexual preference has become overwhelming and unnecessary. My children... I would appreciate no comments that are rude. My children, and if it continues, I would like my time reset. I can't speak over rude people. My children don't need to learn about sex and sexual preference from the school district just as I don't need to know about someone else's sexual preference celebrated for the month of June and shoved down my throat everywhere I turn. If this group is allowed to fly flags all around town on public property celebrating their pride, why are we not allowing the celebration of heterosexual pride and heterosexual pride month? And why is a heterosexual pride flag not represented? Why stop at sexual preference? What about religious flags? Why are we not flying the Christian flag, the Catholic?
Ma'am, ma'am, your time is up. We got, we got the message. Thank you. Thank... Those of you who are yelling in the background over someone speaking, this is your final warning. Next time you speak over them, you will be ejected out of this chamber. City Clerk?
Dennis Jermica.
Yeah, it's, my name is Dennis Jermica. It's shocking to the conscious for us to come here today where people want to suppress the truth and unrighteousness. I think that's what's happening here. They have, you know, this lady here earlier said, "Happy Pride Month." What, that makes no sense to me when we said that's all we're going to celebrate is Pride Month, but we're not celebrating anything else. Is there a Pride Month for, you know, heterosexuals or somebody who just is a straight person? No, we don't see that. In our constitution, United States Constitution, it says, it says it was made only for moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to a government of any other. That was John Adams. Leviticus 18 and 20 in the Bible, including Romans in the New Testament, talks about it being his abomination. And here we're, we're sporting that. We're, we're actually telling you this is...
Thank you, sir. Sir, your time is up. Your, your time is up. Okay, I think all those who had submitted comment card has completed. Now we'll open up to any other. May, okay, just stay in the aisle there and then one at a time. And I'm gonna ask again, do not interrupt the speaker while they're talking, whether you agree or disagree. Let him or her finish. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
Honorable City Council members and Honorable Mayor George Chen, I am speaking in support of the guidelines of Torrance street pole banners because of the many societal divisions or issues regarding banner or flag displays. I'm in favor of other similar city ordinances of defined displays with the following flags only: American flag, the state flag, the Torrance city flag, the county flag, or any six branches of the U.S. military. A position like this does not restrict any individual display on private, public property with current laws. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Downtown Torrance Association. This doesn't have to be a pride issue. This can be a downtown revitalization issue. Just last month, you guys made special zoning guidelines specifically for the downtown area. Now, the Downtown Torrance Association for decades has been in charge of cohesion for that area, as well as have, have put up our own signs for street fair, other events. It's something we already do. Please don't take that away from us in the interest of clarity. We can and should be able to put things up, not just for pride, for Jared Sidney Torrance's birthday, for Independence Day, something for every month. This shows investment in an area and is consistent with stuff you've already done, with revitalization work you've put forward and special guidelines for downtown Torrance. We just want the freedom as downtown to put up our own things. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Yes, hi. I'm speaking on behalf of Lamp Chop, who couldn't make it tonight. I happened to hear Michelle say that she would only respond to questions from city council members. That seems to be a pattern here with Michelle. I asked her a question about the airport at one point, and she said you gotta, you got to fill out a public information request. I've heard other people get that same response. It is a shame. It's irresponsible. It's arrogant. There you go.
Thank you, sir. Please stay on topic on this item. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, good evening, Honorable Mayor Chen and council members. I'm Eric Hall, Torrance resident. I believe using public street posts to display private banner, flags, or signs is inappropriate. While we respect people's choice of lifestyle and belief, we have to recognize that certain lifestyle and cause are conflicting to and against some others' belief and values. If single out one groups and allowing their private banner, flags, and signs displaying in public street posts, it causes division, conflict, and disrespect to others who share different values. Therefore, I support to maintain a policy to only allow government flags displaying in public properties. Government flags effectively represent each and everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I am concerned about the selective enforcement of this regulation. The street fair banners had been hung for 24 years without permits for at least 1,700 days with five different mayors, many different attorneys, managers, and so forth, with nothing being done with them. And as soon as the pride banners went up, the morning after the meeting here, they were taken down at 5:30 in the morning. I think that was showing that you were enforcing a law against a protected group and against people who have exercised their constitutional right of free speech. They went down at 5:30 in the morning. When they, when the Downtown Torrance Association put them back up, they were threatened by, with a misdemeanor. If they did not get them down by midnight that night, that is an ultimatum. That is selective enforcement. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I would like to support that we continue to only fly the national, state, and city flags. They are inherently inclusive. It doesn't get any better than that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
First of all, I would like to counter that. The American flag is not inclusive of everybody. It was not inclusive of my ancestors who were enslaved, is not inclusive of indigenous Americans who had their land stolen from them and endured genocide. It is not inherently inclusive. Let's make that clear. Also, the reason why there's a Pride Month and not a straight month is because straight month is 365 days a year. Pride Month is because LGBTQ people in this country have always been under duress, have always been oppressed, and have received violence from the police. Let's remember that pride started when Marshall P., Marsha P. Johnson, a black trans woman, threw a brick at a cop because he was harassing and brutalizing her and her friends multiple times over a course of, over the course of months, years in a club because they had to go underground to meet because they couldn't be in public and seen.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. We'll let the next one speak. We're trying to get you all through, so please, you know, stay within your minute, and we'll get the next person in. Thank you.
I just moved here last year from Nebraska, and I'm shocked that I moved to California and this is happening. You're taking down pride flags the day after they're put up, and that doesn't send a signal to the LGBT community that they're not welcome here? Do you know how much money we have? We have double income, no kids. You want us to not shop here? You want no support from the gay community, the LGBTQIA+ community? You got it. If that's what you want, we won't come here. We won't spend our money here. And you can have all these people. You can have their dumb redneck hillbilly money if that's what you really want. Like, it's disgusting that I moved here from Nebraska where they're outlawing abortion. They're turning it into Gilead, and I thought I would come here and be accepted and finally be able to be myself, and this is what I met with. It's disgusting, and you should all be ashamed of yourself, especially...
Thank you. I want to remind the audience, please let the speaker speak uninterrupted. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Hello, I am a physician with Harbor UCLA. I want to say that I'm very ashamed of the fact that you're enforcing this policy against the LGBTQ community. These are my patients. I would like to tell all the very bigoted people in this room that I counsel people on a daily basis, and I deal with people who have attempted suicide because they're, they're not accepted by their families because of their identity. And so your city doing this is inherently against or harmful to the residents in the city. So I want to say I fully support pride flags being up in the City of Torrance. It's best for your citizens. It's best for your patients. And frankly, again, you know, I, as a member of the medical community, I'm aghast that you're doing this. This is absolutely horrible, and you have no idea of the psychological harm you're inflicting on people by doing this. And lastly, I want to say that Black Lives Matter, and I want to support a civilian oversight commission in the name of...
Thank you. Next speaker?
Yeah, in terms of, of flags flying, you would think that the city would want to have flags up that encourage these different things that are happening in the community, as well as community members, and making folks feel included and making folks feel seen. But when, you know, I mean, like, we say Black Lives, we said Black Lives Matter, and suddenly you get a whole bunch of White Lives Matter or All Lives Matter, right? All Lives Matter is a clear choice to make. After 10 years, you know what it means and why that is, why that is offensive, why Black Lives Matter is a term, and All Lives Matter. All Lives aren't, aren't being, obviously, don't matter to the collective unless or until Black Lives Matter, trans lives matter, queer lives matter, indigenous lives matter. And that is just a flying a flag.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Continuing what was just said, when Black Lives Matter, when that was coined, the rest of the statement is Black Lives Matter too. If Black Lives mattered and indigenous lives and brown lives and all those that are, pointed, that are... Oh, gosh, I can't even, sorry, I can't get to that. But anyway, the thing is that I know y'all who do not agree with Pride Month think that gender and sexuality is a choice. It's not. Some of you have kids...
Please speak to us, ma'am. You just speak, please, to us, yeah.
Some of you may have kids who are trans or queer. They know it, but they're gonna have to suppress it. It's not a lifestyle. And the reason there is a Pride Month is because of gay and queer people being persecuted from the very beginning. There's always been gay people, and those who are cher...
Ma'am, your time is up. Next speaker, please? Please don't, please don't overspeak the speaker. Go ahead, ma'am.
Flying the pride flag is about recognizing the humanity of a marginalized group of fellow Americans. Saying that, and they comprise about 5% of our population, not a, not a small percentage, and you're marginalizing them and ignoring them. Saying that LGBTQ is a lifestyle choice, hearing that in 2023 is just stunningly shocking. And I'm embarrassed for the City of Torrance.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please?
I'm here in behalf of keeping the American flag up because it's just America and Americans awesome. And we wanna, we wanna, just, I just want to tell you that pride is the same, like, it's just, pride isn't, isn't good. And, and I don't know if you've ever been to like a pride festival or, or anywhere like that.
Please don't interrupt him.
You aren't going to invite that into our cities if we don't, if we don't keep our cities safe now with these, with these bands of flags because they are out there perverted, men being perverted in like lingerie and, and people...
You're out of order. Don't interrupt him anymore. Thank you.
People just doing, dressing up as horses and, and just all this sexuality stuff that God has made pure and made it holy under a marriage covenant, they're trying to pervert, and I know we...
Sir, your time is up. We got, we got the message. Thank you.
Hi, I'm speaking as a member of the Downtown Torrance Association. The city spent money for a revitalization plan which outlines how to revitalize our beautiful historic district. Part of the plan was signage and sense of place. When you travel across the country to downtown areas in the midst of revitalization, you see signage and banners. It creates a sense of place and advertises the area. These would be paid for and managed by the DTA, and here are some ideas. January, Happy New Year. February, Black History Month. March, Women's History Month. April, Spring with cherry blossoms. May, AAPI Month. June, Pride Month. July, Independence Day. August, Jared Sidney Torrance's birthday. September, Latino History Month. October, Fall and Halloween. November, Thanksgiving Indigenous History. December, Winter Holidays. I think that it's up to the city to create clear guidance on how to make banners possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Hello, good evening. I grew up in the City of Torrance, born and raised here. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to Torrance PD for everything you guys have done. Thank you, guys. I want to start off with saying the only flags that should be flown in the City of Torrance is American flag, any military flag, and that's about it. And all of our service people have fought very hard for people to live here and live free and give their lives for this country. And people like that are sitting behind me who are disrespectful for this country... who are disrespectful for this country, and I'm sure they don't live in Torrance, they're more than happy to go somewhere else and, and argue and do what they need to do. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Torrance PD.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Yes, I'm here to speak on the motion going over for the flags. I believe that we should just keep it the way it is and not add these extra flags because the next thing you know, they're gonna want to take the "In God We Trust" down, and, um, we can't be doing all these special things because you guys already know how everything's going on. They want to teach the kids, when the kids are too young to understand this stuff, and, um, I guess they, I, I could, I could see that there's a lot of trauma and bondage because of the simple fact of the hostility, but like, it's okay. I just want everyone in this whole room to know that God loves you, that I love you. God loves you if you're straight, if you're gay, God loves you, um, no matter what. God loves, everybody has fallen short, and, um, don't, if someone tells you that God doesn't love you because you're gay, that's not true. God loves everyone in here, and I just want everyone to know that.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. I just want to, when you are discussing what banners and flags that you're gonna fly in the city, then I just want to remind you of the God that you prayed to earlier, of the name that's up there, that you would honor that God with His laws and His ways, not yours, and not yield to the people and what the people want. We need to honor His name, including, that also includes to love Him with all our heart and to love everyone else. It doesn't matter. We shouldn't have to hang banners or signs, but you should honor the God in whom you open prayer to. Honor the God whose name is up on the wall with the laws and His rules of by which we should all live by so that we can respect and honor one another.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Jean Croco, South High Class of 1970. I want to thank you for your considerations. I've been sitting behind the loud people the entire time, and I asked them if they could be quiet so I could hear the proceedings, and they said that I could move. They, they would not take their conversation elsewhere, and they wouldn't be quiet. But I appreciate that you, the pressure that you've been under, and I pray for you all that you would do a good job of protecting our city from bullies. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anyone else from the public who wish to speak? Again, I'm gonna ask the audience, please allow each speaker to speak uninterrupted. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not embarrassed or ashamed to say that my name is Janet Payne. I'm speaking for myself. I've been absent for over a year at city council meetings because of personal issues, and I come back to what I consider the worst battle of the bands that I've ever seen. I almost can't stand to be in this chamber with the nastiness and the rudeness of everybody. What we have before us is an issue of flags. Then we have another issue of certain kind of flags, and it's getting all mixed up. What I hope is that we continue to have a code and let everybody know what that is so there's clarity about it and keep separation from state and church. Thank you. I wish that when people were so rude...
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello? Oh, it's okay. Uh, I just don't know if it's my English because I, I was educated in another country. It's, I thought this was about permits for banners. It's not an issue for gay, straight, or, or whatever, or American flag, or whatever. I think if you do regulate something, you should enforce it, and the one person said selective enforcement, and that's what I'm talking about. Ashamed is in this thing. The City of Torrance workers went out there with taxpayer money removing those signs. Why? Somebody put two signs on a South High overpass and nobody touched it. Nobody touched it. City workers did not spend time and money of the taxpayers to remove it. Why is that? Why is this a gay issue, not a banner issue?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who wish to speak on this topic? If not, I'll bring it back to the council. Councilman Shake, you want to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank all the emails that were received. I have a lot of conversations from the community members, one-on-one conversation, the phone calls, the emails. Thank you for your engagement. I'd like to emphasize the agenda item today. The agenda item today is about the banners. What type of banners can be placed on streetlights? I'd like to emphasize it's about the banners. What kind of banners can we place on streetlights? It is not about the flags. It is about the banners, which are covered, you know, categorically, the policy that has been attached and provided to the community. They can read about it. Like, uh, Community Development Director Michelle mentioned, there are 10,066 polls are in the city of Torrance. 92, 99% of them belong to SCE. 99%. And they have their own rules and regulations. Only 78, which is 0.8% that we own. And I'd like to state that the polls that, the conditions, whatever has been given to us by SCE, we should apply the same rules here. Briefly, if you look at the H, I'll just point out one of the items. No corporate trademarks, logos, or other corporate identifiers shall be allowed on the city-sponsored banners. This should apply to all the banners, all the street polls. The SCE guidelines only allow non-electrified traffic regulation signs. They allow American flags, the neighborhood watch signs, and other city-sponsored event banners. And I strongly suggest to stay on the topic. It is about the banners. It is not about the flags. On another topic, I have so many friends who belong to LGBTQ community, and honestly, I, I have very good relationship. I like every single one. There are a lot of friends that we hang out, and it's, the, the old notion that we had, "Don't ask, don't tell" policy is long gone. Whatever you believe in, you should be able to express that in anywhere in this country. That's the beauty of our country. As far as the proclamation is concerned, I'd like to state that we should have a resolution to proclaim, proclaim, uh, the resolution about Pride Month. This will give a very clear message to, to all the community members that they are welcome. We can have a resolution about the proclamation for the LGBTQ, for the Pride Month, and for any other community members that want to come and have a resolution that we can, we can, we can go with that. But not to create a diversity and disparity by having different types of, you know, signs. I, I'd like to hear what other of my colleagues have to say, but I would like to request my colleague to bring back a resolution proclaiming the Pride Month. That, that will, that will be something that we can probably, you know, work with each other and, and give a message to the community that we all like, love you. We like you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more between Michelle or Patrick, so I'll go with Mr. Solomon first. If we were to adopt the exact language for SC, from SCE, we would have to do two public hearings, is that correct, in order to do that, a first and second reading?
No, that's, that's if the city wanted to do an ordinance. If it just wants to do a policy, you can adopt that by a resolution. You don't have to actually use an ordinance to adopt a policy.
The same thing, the same way that it was done for the current flag policy?
Correct. Um, I, and it would just need to come back as a resolution that lays out the policy. We've done it for Settlement Authority. We've done it for Wireless Telecom. We've done it for a couple other things that way, so, and that gives the council the ability to change it if it ever wants to in the future without having to go through two readings of an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. Who said it wasn't gonna be fun tonight, right? The flag, uh, the flag policy is really what we should be talking about, you know, start laying down some, uh, some regulations that are, are fair across the board, which obviously is never gonna be really fair because at the end of the day, somebody's gonna be leaving upset, one way or another, right? I do believe that freedom of speech is very important. Knowing that I, I come from a country that freedom of speech is not existent, I, I definitely appreciate our right to be able to speak up, whether you're speaking up on something that people like, controversial, non-controversial, doesn't matter. We have that right here in America. But where I find a problem is when we use freedom of speech as almost like a tool, a leverage, that pushes also political agendas, et cetera. Now, having said that, I really do think that one of the only solutions to this flag issue is only fly one flag, which is the American flag, the red, white, and blue. And quite honestly, if the American flag offends you, that's a problem with you. That is not a problem with our country. I think since we're, we're, you know, we can't really dictate what happens with the Southern California Edison polls, right? I mean, that's, they have their own policies. And I know we have a lot of great programs, whatever it is, Harvest Month, I don't, I don't know, whatever that program may be, things that we want to promote, but I think it's gotten to the point to where these, these 78 polls have become so, I guess, you know, radioactive to where I think we just need to really, there's limitations that really stick to our, our core values, which is the American flag. You have your POW flags that we, we can fly, any, anything that's connected directly to government operations and military, I think is something that should be approved, and that's it. Because if you do allow one group to come in, which I have nothing against the LGBT community, but, because I know that's been kind of like the discussion here mainly, just, just think of when that group that comes and asks for a permit to put up flags for something that maybe none of us in Torrance really agree with, but yet they use this meeting, this ordinance, this, uh, these rules that we might put together as a tool to promote their organizations that we may not agree with. I'm not even gonna name, mention the, these names because I think they're vile, but what if they came to the counter and asked for a permit to put up flags for their cause that are divisive, destructive, whatever you want, vile? No, like your causes, actually. Yes. So, what happens at that point? What happens at that point where we have to say, well, no, well, no to one, but yes to another? So, I think in an effort to really avoid any issues, American flags, government flags, and, and veteran flags-
I'm gonna interrupt you, Council Matucci. You are expelled from this council in this building.
So, I mean, it's either an all or nothing, and I think it's a kind of like a slippery slope.
And the person cannot return. Sorry about that, Council Matucci.
No, no, no problem, no problem.
Go ahead, Council Matucci. Sorry for interrupting you.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm making it long-winded here, but I, I really do believe that the only flags we should be flying in an effort to avoid any problems with other organizations and movements that we may not agree with from either side. I may agree with one and not the other, and, you know, so who's gonna be behind the counter saying, "I'm sorry, Group A, you can have a permit to put, fly flags, but Group B can't?" And why not? Who's gonna be the deciding factor? No matter what policies we put together under the umbrella of freedom, of freedom, freedom of speech, anybody can really put up anything. I can put up, you know, flags with clown faces. I come in and say, "I want to put flags with clown faces on it," and what are you gonna tell me? "No, what's it about?" I mean, "Well, because I celebrate clowns." Now what? You know, where do we, where do we draw the line? And I don't think there's any policy that can protect us against the freedom of speech. So, in an effort to really avoid any future problems, I really do think we need to limit to government flags, such as obviously our country's flag, POW, you know, anything that's related to military, county, state, and of course, our city, our city flag. But anything other than that, I think should be something that's off limits on these 78 polls. That's my thoughts, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Matucci. Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. I was the one that requested this item to come back, and when I did so, I believe the message within the community got conflated with three other issues that are three separate issues. One of the issues that we are not discussing here tonight are the civic proclamations. The second one are the flags that currently fly over the municipal facilities within the city of Torrance, which is currently the American flag, the state flag, the city of Torrance flag, and the POW MIA flag. The intent was never to add another flag to those four flags currently flying over our city facilities. The request for this motion, or this item, pardon me, was to make sure that there's no ambiguity on what is allowed on Southern California's Edison's polls and their property to make sure that there is no question. So, we won't be here again in the future when another group is. Some, somewhere between when I asked for it to come back and now, it's in the community that we are gonna do a flag presentation. We're gonna add it to what's already existing, and I just want to say that that is not what we're deciding. What we are deciding is do we need to adopt an additional policy that clarifies what can be flown on the current polls that have been identified for banners? For example, the Hometown Heroes. Those, those would fall under the SCE policy. So, before we get upset or it gets back up into the community that we're refusing to fly this, that, or the other, that was another, never the intent for tonight. The, the intent was to clarify what the banner policy is, not if we should add another additional flag or allow other organizations or causes or civic groups to fly flags along with the four flags that we have throughout the city, and I thought we should- And I thought we should make that clarification tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis. Councilwoman Kaji.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Lewis, for that clarification. I think that answers a lot of what I was going to bring up. I do have a question for the city attorney, and I'm just referring to the staff memorandum. My understanding of the staff memorandum is that under the current Torrance Municipal Code, the definition as it applies to terms such as civic, patriotic, and general public interest are not well-defined? Is that true?
That is correct.
Okay. And also, I think the staff memorandum also stressed the need for viewpoint neutrality or content-neutral approach as far as the types of flags that are flown or banners.
Correct. If it is expanding beyond government flags, it would have to be content-neutral.
Okay. Would it be staff's analysis that the Southern California Edison policies do achieve that viewpoint neutrality?
Correct, because it limits what can be placed on there to non-electrified traffic regulating signs, American flags, neighborhood watch signs, and city-sponsored events. So a city-sponsored event would be like the Armed Forces Day Parade, or the Hometown Heroes Celebration, or the Centennial Celebration in the past.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Kaji, for that clarification. Councilwoman Kalani.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of my fellow colleagues for your clarification, your questions. To continue on the question that Councilmember Kaji asked, the downtown street fair banners, is that or is that not a city-sanctioned event?
They have an agreement with us. It is not city-sponsored. So the fact that it was up for 24 years is really an error on the part of staff, both in various departments, including my own. But it does not qualify as a city-sponsored event. It is actually clear in their agreement with the city that it's not a city-sponsored event.
Okay, thank you. And is it correct to say there's nothing preventing someone from expressing what's important to them within their own property?
That is correct. Anyone can do what they want on private property. As Director Ramirez mentioned earlier, there are some issues if it gets onto city street trees, city furniture such as benches. And then there's issues of if it's encroaching onto the city right-of-way. You may have a right to have an awning, but if you're hanging other stuff off of the awning, that might be a violation of our Municipal Code.
So I might suggest on another conversation that we further discuss that. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Anyone else in the council wish to speak? I think what I'm hearing is we're converging. I think the topic is banners on light poles. And it looks like we already have something very clear for Southern California Edison-owned light poles. And what I'm, as I listen to all my colleagues and appreciate all the comments from the public as well, is that we need some clarification for the 78 light poles from the City of Torrance. And I'm leaning towards something very similar, or Meredith, Southern California Edison's guidelines to provide clarity. And I think the question and responses that I heard, I'll check with our staff, does that provide sufficient clarity that's requested?
If that's the will of the council, then staff can develop a policy based on a CE's policy and bring that back for the city council's consideration.
Councilman Mutucci.
The Southern California Edison, does that include also city-sponsored events such as Armed Forces Day?
Yes.
It is part of that, right?
Yes.
And it limits, as far as other types of flags, it limits it to government flags such as the American flag, county, state?
It actually just states "American flag."
State and American.
And then it states any city-sponsored event.
Gotcha. All right.
I guess the thing is, these are light poles. They're not flag poles. Councilwoman Lewis.
I just have one more question. I noticed also in Item H from SoCal Edison that they spoke about corporate logos. I just wanted to ensure that as staff is developing this policy to align with our separate flag policy, that there may be some times where we may have a business in this city that may cosponsor or sponsor an event. So I just want to make sure that we are not excluding our Torrance businesses that may help us with a city-sanctioned event or partnership.
I can take that one. So that still would not be allowed on the 9,988 Edison polls? The city could have an exception on its 78 polls, but only on those 78 polls.
And then my question is, do we have anything on the 78 polls now?
I don't believe so. Their locations are such that they're not, even in the downtown area, it's actually along Cravens. It's not along Sotory, Cabrillo, El Prado. It's only on Cravens down there. But they're located in seven areas throughout the city, and they're all kind of obscured locations. Except for, you know, Delamo between Crenshaw Boulevard and Madrona.
Okay. And I don't think I've ever seen any banners there.
No. And we have not received any requests to place banners on any of our polls.
So could we put that also in the ordinance that banners will not be allowed on those 78 poles since we don't have the infrastructure to hang them technically? There are no banner ties or anything like that?
Your Honor, Danny Santana, City Manager's Office. The infrastructure may not be on the streetlights presently, but there is a way to add a means to affix banners to them, similar to what is done on SCE polls. So there is a way to add that. And then with respect to corporate logos, if a corporate entity stepped up to support a city-sponsored event, the city would do everything it could to recognize them in other ways. It does not mean that they have to be recognized on any banner or flag that gets mounted onto a streetlight. So we can find other ways to recognize a support of an entity.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was also crystal clear.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, both.
Councilman Griffiths.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question for staff in regards to the question of enforcement or selective enforcement. Typically, the city enforces things usually on a complaint basis. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so if someone had complained, you would likely have taken action and followed the code for enforcement? Would that be a correct statement?
Correct.
So to have someone say that we're selectively enforcing is probably not a true statement because maybe just no one complained.
Correct.
So I just want to make that clear. And that's true not just for signs or banners, but almost every single thing that we have codes for in our city. Because if nobody complains about it, it tends to get away with the enforcement. And that goes with, you know, we see a street sign that says the speed limit's 35, and people drive fast on that all the time. But we don't enforce it 100%, and there's no way we could. And that's really true for all of our codes, is that we just don't have the capacity to enforce every single code that we have. And so that's why we primarily do enforcement based on complaints. And I just want to make that clear. That was something I learned when I got involved with the city is, yeah, I thought everything was supposed to be enforced all the time, but when I found out that it's just prohibitive to have staff enforcing everything all the time, 100% of the time. And so I just want to make sure people understand that enforcement and selective enforcement are two very different things. And I think the city does its best to try to enforce our ordinances, our codes. And if you have an issue with a particular thing that you think there's a code for, feel free to call in and complain about it, and that will be followed up. So I just want to make that clarification for public.
Thank you very much. Any other more comments from a council member? I see a motion right now. So, Councilman Mutucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we adopt a, or bring back a resolution, I mean, a policy that would reflect Southern California's policy, which would include the ability to place on these 78 city-owned polls the American flag, California flag, military flags, and city sanctioned flags. Yeah, and POW MIA. That's my motion.
A second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Just want to say thank you to all my colleagues here and all the public. I know I've got a little emotional here. And please, and thank you for doing your best to allow speakers to complete their one-minute. I just heard a request for break time, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be right back. We're now moving on to item 9G from the City Manager's or Staff Presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Jamie Lay, City Manager's Office. Item 9G is a recommendation of the City Manager that City Council approve the side letter agreement between Torrance Professional and Supervisory Association and Management in the amount of $297,159, which increases the Transit Supervisor's salary grade by 17%, Fleet Services Supervisor's salary grade by 10.8%, and Public Safety Communication Supervisor's salary grade by 2%. Staff is available for questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have comments or questions for staff?
Christopher, Alfred Mitchell, say his name. Say his name.
The three ladies gone out are actually ejected and will not be allowed to come back into this office.
Black line, say your name.
And please close the door. Okay, I just, let's see where we left off before we got interrupted. I believe now it's time for any members of the public who wish to speak on this item.
Well, I just would like to tell you, I went to visit the Transit Center Saturday afternoon. It was me, a security guard, and then somebody who, the security called because I was filming, God forbid. It was nobody there. They'll spend $54 million. But we don't have enough bus driver, right? Did you guys know about it? We don't have bus drivers. But we have 17% increase for Transit Supervisor, 10% increase Fleet Service Supervisor. Hey, maybe if you would increase the wages for the bus drivers, we would have bus drivers. You know, you could rake in some money to pay back for the security guard because nobody riding the bus. I was there half an hour, not one person but me and the security guard. Oh, and he was bothering me. He asked me five times if I'm okay.
Thank you. Are you okay? Anyone else in the public who wish to speak? If not, I'll take a motion to concur with City Manager and approve side letter agreement between Torrance Professional Supervisor Association and Management.
So moved.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We are now moving on to item 10, hearings. Item 10A from Public Works, is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jessamine Q. from Public Works. This item has two recommendations related to the annual levy of assessments for the City of Torrance Lighting District 99-1 for fiscal year 2324. Conduct a public hearing on the proposed levy of assessments within the City of Torrance Lighting District 99-1 for fiscal year 2324. Adopt a resolution confirming the diagram and assessment for fiscal year 2324 and ordering the improvements in connection with the City of Torrance Lighting District 99-1. The lighting district was established in 1999 and paced for street lighting citywide through assessments on parcels in the city. On May 23rd, 2023, City Council approved three resolutions. To initiate proceedings, approve the engineer's report and indicate the city's intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2324 and setting a public hearing for this evening. The adoption of the resolution before you would order the assessments to be levied for fiscal year 2324. The assessments are the same as last year and have been the same since 2000. Single-family residential properties would again be assessed $20.50 in fiscal year 2324 or $1.71 a month. Assessments paid by property owners would pay for special benefits of street lighting only. The cost of street lighting in the district in fiscal year 2224 is estimated at $1,806,995, a 10.9% or $178,025 increase from fiscal year 2223. The increase is due to increase in SCE rates. Assessment revenues are projected to be $1,387,210 in fiscal year 2324. And the balance of district costs would be funded by gas tax funds in the amount of $419,785 through the fiscal year 2324 budget. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Looks like I might have skipped a few lines here. Just want to make sure I check for the city clerk, has this matter been properly advertised?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council here or the staff? I thought Councilman Sheik was punching in. Now go the public.
James Henry.
Each speaker will have two minutes to speak.
I have a handout. Subject: Use of General Fund to Fund A Portion Of The Street Lighting District. I have two questions. Why is the city now funding a portion of the total funding for this lighting district out of this general fund? Question number two. How did the city arrive at the general fund amount of $30,109 for fiscal year 202324? Please supply the mathematical equation using all factors to arrive at that amount. Pointing to the table, this table. There wasn't any general fund money used in the previous fiscal years, 2019 to 2022, to fund the street lighting district. Why now? I'm done with my presentation.
Thank you. Does staff have a response for that?
Yes, Your Honor. It's the assessment for the city parcels that are not within the airport property.
Okay, that's where the funding came from.
That's why we're paying it with general funds.
Okay. I think, I think Councilman Tucci has a question. How about the years before?
Yeah, the years before, yeah. I guess it brings up a good question. The years before, there was no general funds. And then, starting in 2223, we started having to contribute. What changed between those years? Is there any particular changes?
So I think, you know, whenever we can use gas tax funds or airport funds, and then we have the revenue from the public, those are all streetlight costs that are eligible with those funds. So if there's certain costs in the district that are not eligible for use of gas tax funds, which means streetlights that are considered part of the roadway, those are eligible costs. But there may be some soft costs or direct costs, such as maybe publications for the Daily Breeze and things of that nature, where we're not eligible for gas tax or airport funds, and we can't use the public's assessment money that's collected to offset those. So that would be where we would have to use general funds to subsidize.
Okay, so obviously something changed in our processes that would require us to pitch in.
In putting together the budget for the district, when we look at the economics, yes.
I got you, I got you. Okay. So there were some changes, I think, to answer the gentleman's question. There were some changes in our processes that required us to pitch in a little bit because of the expenditures that weren't covered on their reimbursement.
Correct. Essentially, not necessarily processes because we've approached the district the same way since 1999, but it's whether the funding sources that we've identified in the table are eligible for the district cost. So in this particular case, of that $1.8 million for the total expenditure, the costs for the revenue that's coming in from the assessments, plus the eligible cost for gas tax, plus the eligible cost from the perimeter lights around the airport, those are costs that were paid. We maximize the non-general fund use first, and then anything that has to be subsidized with general funds last. And so in this particular case, it's only about $30,000.
Okay. So hypothetically, next year can be $200,000, right? I mean, depends on what the actual expenditures are and what we're able to recoup.
I hope not that high.
Okay, but it'll be a, it'll be a changing number.
Yes. From basically, the short answer from just receiving the question is essentially that.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think staff is trying to use money elsewhere before we dig into the general fund. I think that's the general philosophy we're trying, that I'm hearing. Councilman Sheik.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Belizarian, just for the same argument, there's no impact on residents. They're not contributing anything. It's just, it is just this general fund, not anything that's coming out of the residents.
Councilman, essentially, there's a tax assessment that goes on a property tax bill every year. And so the Council does approve that assessment to be levied. And so the residents, depending on the property type, essentially, we've mentioned in the report, it's about $20.50 a year for residential property, single-family home, which equates to about $1.71 per month for the benefit of having an illuminated sidewalk or roadway for 24/7, 365 days a year. And to, I know there was discussion earlier this evening about the number of streetlights, 10,066 throughout the city, with the majority being SCE owned. It's important for the public to know that when there is a streetlight outage in Torrance, that you should contact SCE directly to initially report. They do have a website, and they also have a link to where you would report that. When you do report that, you give an address, a pole number, and then they generate a response to you to tell you that they've received it. But there's also certain lights in Torrance that are owned and operated by the city. So if you, we did have an instance where we reported something to Edison. It was actually a city Torrance streetlight, and it was a little bit of slow communication to get back to it. So with any doubt, anyone can always call Public Works to report a streetlight outage as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're still in the public comments.
Again, it's gonna be hard to fill two minutes, you know? But let me tell you, when I bought my shack, you know, in 1991, because they kicked me out of Redondo Beach, and you know, I had to buy a house real quick, and I find a cheap one in Torrance. And if you know my property, you can see. And I like it, but I don't understand this. In 1991, I did not pay this street lighting thing, you know? I only find out I pay taxes, actually not taxes. I paid Southern California Edison like $6.50 a month for street lighting. Anyway, so I don't know if we have only that few city streetlights and Southern California Edison keep up the rest of them, then why, 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 why I'm texting by the city on this? What are you doing with this money? Where do you maintain streetlights when you don't have streetlights? The Southern California Edison charged me $6.50 for street lighting, and they have 10,000 poles or whatever you say. You have less than 1,000, and then you're charging me 20 bucks for, for just that, what I pay already for the Southern Califor- Edison? This is just show you how you texting the people. You know, this thing was created to get more money out of the homeowner's pocket. And it's sad to see that Mr. Sheik doesn't even know that, what his assessment mean, and that money that taxpayers, homeowners, pay out of their pocket. That's what assessment is. Taxes called assessment also. Thank you very much. Next time, we go to other.
Thank you. I think Public Works Director wants to make a comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Craig Belizarian, Public Works. So the district, which is citywide, was actually created by a vote of the people. And the collection or the assessment that the Speaker is referencing, it goes to pay for the costs of street lighting throughout the city. So essentially, even though the city owns a small portion, Edison owns a larger portion. But the city directly pays Edison for the cost of the district, and so the cost is borne by the derivation of the engineer's report.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public wish to speak on this topic? I don't see any. So let's see. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Does it say the Council wish to take action? I think I see a motion, but maybe I'll ask the City Clerk for a number and title, please.
Your Honor, this is Resolution Number 2023-73. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California, confirming a diagram and assessment for fiscal year 202324 in connection with the City of Torrance Lighting District Number 99-1 pursuant to the provisions of the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972, Part 2 of Division 15 of the California Streets and Highways Code and as provided by Article 13D of the California Constitution.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number and adopt Resolution Number 2023-73.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We're on to item 10B. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on Agenda Item 10B. Consider Appeal of Planning Commission Denial Of A Sign Permit to Allow The Replacement Of Two Wall Signs and Refacing Of A Roof Sign on property located within downtown Torrance District Commercial Sector at 2026 Torrance Boulevard. Has this matter been properly advertised?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Thank you. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Oscar Martinez, and I have a brief presentation covering the material tonight. This item is a consideration of the Planning Commission's denial of sign permit to allow the replacement of two wall signs and refacing of a roof sign on property located at 2026 Torrance Boulevard.
Apologies, Your Honor. Just one moment. For the, for those who are watching the Council meeting online, we're actually in the process of uploading the PowerPoint presentation. So just hang tight with us. Okay, Your Honor, thank you. I think we're ready to go. Mr. Martinez, would you mind starting again? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Santana.
All right. Let's, let's do it again.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council, City Council. My name is Oscar Martinez, and I have a brief presentation covering the item tonight. The item is a consideration of an, a consideration of an appeal of Planning Commission's denial of a sign permit to allow the replacement of two wall signs and refacing of a roof sign on property located at 2026 Torrance Boulevard. Slide please. The subject property is shown in green and is located at the corner of Torrance Boulevard and Ingrasia Avenue in downtown Torrance District, in the downtown Torrance District Commercial Sector, and is surrounded by commercial buildings to the north and west and multifamily residences to the south and the east. The property has 120 feet of frontage along Torrance Boulevard and 85 feet along, along Ingrasia Avenue. Slide please. This slide depicts the aerial view of the property outlined in yellow and the location of the two wall signs, which are labeled A1 and A2, that are being replaced, and the roof sign that is also being refaced and is labeled as, labeled B. Slide please. The proposed signage is part of the company's reimaging of America Tire Company stores nationwide. The Torrance, the downtown Torrance signage standards allow a total sign area of 1.5 square feet for each linear foot of street frontage at a maximum letter height of 18 inches and overall height of 2.6 feet. This slide depicts a proposed wall sign and the existing wall sign on the Torrance Boulevard frontage. For each wall sign, the letter height will range in height from 18 inches to 30 inches, and the overall height will be 5.7 inches, which will be 98.6 square feet in area. The existing wall signs, which are each 18 inches tall by 25 feet wide, and they are 37.5 square feet in area. Slide please. This slide depicts a proposed wall sign and existing wall sign facing Ingrasia Avenue. The sign will be the same dimensions in size as the wall sign proposed on Torrance Boulevard. Slide please. The existing double-sided roof sign will be refaced, and it totals, it measures 114 square feet in area per side. The downtown, the downtown sign standards prohibit roof, ground, and pole signs unless approved by the, approved by the Environmental Quality Commission or Planning Commission. The roof sign was permitted in 1970 prior to the establishment of the sign standards in 1980. The combined area, the combined sign area for the wall signs and double-sided roof signs will be 425 square feet, which exceeds 307 square feet allowed under the sign standards based on the street frontage of the property. Due to the letter height, overall sign height, and combined sign area exceeding what is allowed by the sign standard, the sign permit request was denied by the Community Development Director. The applicant appealed the director's decision, and on March 3rd, the Planning Commission considered the appeal. A commissioner suggested that the matter be continued to allow, to allow the applicant to continue to work with staff to see if alternative solutions could be presented. The applicant requested that the commission take action on the request as proposed, and the commission denied the appeal and the sign permit by a vote of 5 to 2. Slide please. After the appeal, the Planning Commission's decision was final, was filed. After the, the appeal, the Planning Commission's decision was filed, the applicant submitted photographic renderings of alternate designs for letter height for council's consideration should the proposed 30-inch lettering be rejected. The top rendering depicts a proposed request for 30-inch-tall lettering resulting in 98 square feet per wall sign and 425 square feet of total sign area, including the double-faced roof sign. The bottom rendering depicts 28-inch-tall lettering resulting in 90 square feet per wall sign and a total area of 408 square feet. Slide please. The top rendering depicts the 26-inch-tall letters resulting in 77 square feet per wall sign and a total area of 382 square feet. And the bottom rendering depicts 23-inch-tall letters resulting in 59 square feet per wall sign and 346 square feet of total sign area. Slide please. This, the top rendering depicts 19-inch-tall lettering resulting in 40... This, uh, the top rendering depicts nineteen inch tall lettering resulting in forty, forty-one square feet per wall sign and three hundred and ten square feet of total sign area. None of the aforementioned options comply with the total sign area or letter height standards. The bottom rendering depicts sixteen inch tall lettering resulting in twenty-nine square feet per wall sign and two hundred and eighty-six square feet of total sign area. This option complies with the total sign area and maximum letter allowed by the downtown sign standard. Signs that do not meet the sign standards may be allowed with the approval of creative, of creative sign permit by the planning commission. If the signs meet the design criteria outlined in the Torrance Municipal Code for design quality, contextual criteria, architectural criteria, and impact on surrounding uses. Slide please. The planning commission and the community development director recommend that council deny the appeal and adopt a resolution denying the appeal and denying the sign permit to allow the replacement of two wall signs and refacing of the roof sign on property located in the downtown Torrance District Commercial Sector at two zero two six Torrance Boulevard. That concludes staff's presentation and is available for any questions.
Thank you. I believe, uh, looks like Councilman Matucci has a question.
Thank you, mayor. The, uh, city code on signage, I mean, I've dealt with it personally. It's pretty simple. Uh, it's, I think it's cut and dry. Uh, and that's good, but I do believe that sometimes, there's always that but, right? I do believe that sometimes we have to take a look at the, the whole picture. Um, what I see here is, um, a property that, A, is not necessarily, uh, symmetrical with the street. You know, you have a little bit of a, so there is an opportunity for visibility and signage, uh, to be very, I guess, useful to the business and the branding, uh, purpose, for branding purposes, uh, along, I guess it would be A-two, where it says A-two. On, I guess it's the third page. The presentation shows, uh... So when we talk about frontage, uh, are we talking about the, only the A-one portion or A-one or B portion of, of the street? When we, when we do our calculations, that's what we use, right? It's just the street frontage, not necessarily, uh, because in this particular case, one could argue that the wall that's a little bit more of a diagonal is, is technically street-facing as well. But are we using that wall in the calculations as well?
Councilman Matucci, uh, the area calculations are based on the total street frontage, so we do take into account both Ingrasia and Torrance Avenue Boulevard.
Okay, okay. Uh, so a lot of the, I guess I would imagine a lot of the allowance is being eaten up by the, the monument, right? On top of the roof, the rooftop. Is that correct? Am I correct?
Correct. It's currently a hundred and fourteen square feet on each side.
Okay, okay. Obviously, you know, the, uh, what was denied, I, I get it, you know, it went way over our allowance, um, but I, I do think, in all fairness, I did, oh, by the way, I would like to disclose the fact that I did talk to, uh, the appellant, not necessarily the appellant, but to their offices. Uh, we did speak about this, uh, this, uh, not just this project, but all, all the other projects that they've been doing in other cities, uh, across the state. Uh, they did mention something to me that actually kinda took me back a little bit, uh, saying that Torrance was probably one of the best cities to work in, but it was one of the only cities that actually gave, we gave them a hard time about the signage and their rebranding efforts. Now, you know, and you guys, staff is following what's on the books, so I'm not blaming anybody here, 'cause I just want to make that clear. Uh, but I do, I do feel that in certain situations where we have a, uh, a line of travel that's, that might be, you know, maybe a wider street than something else, a faster-moving portion of the, of the, uh, of the area, I mean, of the city, um, a building that maybe is, you know, odd-shaped like this to where it has, you know, different type, different frontages, different opportunities, uh, for signage. And also when you have a two-sided sign, um, it brings, to me, it brings the argument, you don't really see both sides of the sign at the same time. Therefore, I think, uh, I don't know if we're using both sides in the calculation in this particular case. Uh, I was, because I understand, we don't want sign pollution. We don't want like just, everybody just putting huge signs everywhere, then it just, it's gonna look like, uh, you know, just, just a bunch of signs, you kinda lose yourself in it, but... I think we need to show some flexibility. So I don't know how we can achieve that. I don't know if we have to change some of our, uh, some of our codes in general so that every business can have obviously the same, same or similar treatment. I think the signs that's there is not very, very good, it's not very visible. I think the rebranding of America's Tire is, is great. I think it's gonna be beneficial to the company and in turn it's gonna be beneficial to us. Uh, if we can find a way, in my opinion, you know, not necessarily give them the, the biggest that they want, but something maybe a little bit, little bit reduced, uh, that, and, and also at the same time, I do really do think that we need to start identifying, um, different situations to where we might have some flexibility. And I know this is part of the process, this is the flexibility, but I just don't want like council A to say yes to, you know, then three years later, same exact situation, council B says no. So then it starts creating, well, you did it for that company in two thousand twenty-three, but in twenty, twenty-five, you're not. So it would be nice to have a code, uh, city code, uh, on signs that actually gives flexibility under certain circumstances, um, and to where it, it is black and white and not just at our discretion. Ideally, that's, uh, how I'd like to see it, but I get it. City council has that discretion. Uh, so I'm leaning towards giving, allowing America's Tire, uh, to fulfill their, their, uh, uh, rebranding, um, efforts and allow them to go with, you know, maybe, I think one of the options, let's see, option... So option six is code compliant, but if I'm not mistaken, maybe I'm just, you know, my eyesight's going. I mean, that's just tiny, and I know a lot of the square footage is being, the allowance is being eaten up by that top roof sign. Um, I'd be, I'd be leaning more towards, uh, the seventy, what is that, seventy-six square feet and, and also at the same time, which is option three. Uh, but also allowing the, allowing us the, uh, or giving us the, uh, instruction, giving staff the instruction to go back and actually see if we can improve our signage code, uh, to have a little bit more flexibility in these types of, uh, uh, situations. I think Danny Santana would like to say?
Uh, uh, thank you, Councilman, I was, but I believe our community development director might have something to add on that.
Your honorable mayor, councilmembers, Michelle Ramirez, Community Development, uh, Director. I, I just wanted the council to be aware that, uh, this, because of the location of this in the downtown Torrance track, uh, the Torrance overlay actually has more restrictive guidelines under the sign code than other areas of the, than the, um, community does. So while, um, here this sign might not be allowed, in another area of the city it might be, but again, it's because the Torrance track dictates this area and there are more restrictive codes in that, uh, overlay.
Okay, so, but the council still has the ability to?
Absolutely, that's why we're here in front of you.
Yeah.
So, so unfortunately, the, the staff's hands are bound by that code, but it does give the flexibility for it to go to the planning commission and city council to decide otherwise.
Okay, so on option six, code compliance, that is not a citywide, uh, that is not a citywide guideline, it's only for this particular track, is that what you're saying?
Uh, mayor, Oscar, members of the City Council, Oscar Martinez, Community Development Department, yes, uh, Councilman Matucci, that's correct. In the downtown Torrance area, we do, this area also has a size limit on the, on the size of the letters. Uh, where in other areas there, they don't have those restrictions. That's part of it what's coming into play as well.
I got you, okay. So, so hypothetically, if this particular business was on, let's say, across the street over here, what would be that requirement? Would it fit within the option one that was rejected?
Councilman Matucci, do you want to just say the American Tire on Hawthorne Boulevard?
Oh, there you go. American Tire on Hawthorne Boulevard, let's say that one. Would they have the same, I mean, obviously they're not, uh, would, would option one work on Hawthorne Boulevard, their ratio?
Uh, Councilman Matucci, Oscar Martinez, Community Development Department, I think I would have to do a calculation on that one because it's based on the area of the frontage, uh, of the size of the parcel, and I believe the one on Hawthorne Boulevard is, is not as wide as this one, so it's possible that it'd be allowed.
No, no, I meant like with these dimensions.
Oh, i- it's possibly, yes, your, uh, Councilman, it's possible it could be allowed. If there was, if this parcel was in the exact same spot on, let's say on Hawthorne Boulevard.
Okay, so when, when this tire company moved into that location, was that overlay already in place?
I, I believe this overlay was in place since nineteen eighty, uh, and the signage, the roof sign was approved back in nineteen seventy, so it came, the standards came after that.
Standards came after the sign was installed. Okay, so one could argue that it was grandfathered in.
Your honor, Danny Santana said he manages office of grandfathering consideration, I think would be a bit of a stretch because now they're revising the sign program, so I wouldn't...
No, no, I get that again. So I mean, what's there now is obviously grandfathered.
Correct. Uh, the other thing I would add is, uh, something that was on, um, Community Development Director, Michelle Ramirez's last comment, is that's why we're here. Uh, for the person behind the counter, it's very beneficial to them to have a black and white code. It makes it easy to understand, it makes it easy to communicate what to submit in order to secure the necessary approvals. That said, the code gives the flexibility that Councilman Matucci, you were speaking to, that there needs to be some exceptions, uh, and having a threshold of requiring a commission or council review to ensure that those exceptions are exceptions and only when they meet certain criteria. That criteria was included in a draft resolution that staff provided that commences on page seven and continues onto eight, that includes findings that allows for, uh, the council or the commission to make that exception, regardless of whether it's a tire store, a cheese wheel selling restaurant, whatever the case may be, it, it is standard across, regardless of the content, it's just the size, the location that doesn't meet the formula. If not, it comes to the council for review.
Yeah, I mean, it's Torrance Boulevard, I mean, it's one of our, no, sorry, it's one of our main arteries within the city, so I, I would hardly call it, you know, kind of snuggled into the neighborhood type of, uh, situation, but, uh, it is pretty fast traffic and, you know, I wanna make sure that they get a fair chance at, uh, getting the signage that they feel would best work to get customers in.
So Councilman, if you do feel comfortable with option three, the findings and the resolution that staff provided on page seven, allow the council to make that determination today?
Okay, flexibility, okay. Yeah, I think i- if the, if the appellant would be okay with it, I would, I would definitely support, uh, option three. Option three, uh, at the, at the bare minimum, I, I think it was, is a fair compromise. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Griffiths?
Thank you, mayor. A question for staff. We're still in the public hearing, correct? Option six, the code compliant, uh, view, that's code compliant for the wall signs, but not the roof sign, is that correct?
Uh, Councilman Griffiths, Oscar Martinez, Community Development Department, uh, that's i- it's correct, but that's also taken into account the fact that it's got the, we're using the roof sign area towards that cap as well.
Okay. So the roof sign is penalizing the sidewall signs?
That's correct.
Um, just for the record, um, I spent eight years on the Environmental Commission, saw a lot of sign hearings, uh, also served on the planning commission, saw more sign hearings. I think it's really important that we avoid making exceptions as much as possible, just because once you start making exceptions, then everybody's gonna expect an exception, and, and I think we wanna make sure that we prevent that from happening. I, I think the roof sign provides more than enough signage for anyone driving down Torrance Boulevard at full speed to see what, what this building is and, and not to be able to miss it. And so I, I would be in support of, um, maintaining the code compliance and denying the appeal.
Thank you. Councilman Macaji?
Uh, thank you. Um, have a question for staff. Going back to nineteen eighty, when the downtown Torrance sign standard was, uh, created, was that, um, at a point in time when the, when the downtown area is part of a redevelopment district?
Councilman Macaji, Oscar Martinez, Community Development Department, yes, that's correct. It was when, established when, uh, the area was, the redevelopment agency had, uh, essentially, they had jurisdiction over that area.
Uh, a- as far as creating a, a more, say, stringent sign standard, uh, uh, does anyone have the institutional history or knowledge as to why, uh, that was imposed on the downtown area, say opposed to the Hawthorne corridor?
I'll make an attempt, Councilman.
You don't seem that old.
Uh, my understanding from, uh, from the history that was passed through, uh, my predecessors in the Community Development Department, then Planning Department, it was to try and remain consistent with the low-scale profile and architecture that had existed in downtown, uh, and attempting to remain consistent with what had been, uh, experienced to that point. Some, uh, contrary to what larger developments, uh, more vehicle counts that you would see on, say, Hawthorne Boulevard.
So it was done to maintain the unique character of downtown Torrance?
That's my understanding, Councilman.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kalani?
Thank you, mayor. I know that it, it reflects option six within your handout as far as the roof sign. Um, did I miss option six as far as the side of the building? Or they would remain the same?
I think we probably need a little help with the calculation. I think when you say it's the roof sign and the wall sign, right? Maybe that clarification might help all of us.
So, uh, your honorable mayor and members of the City Council, so the roof sign itself totals two hundred and forty-eight square feet because it's a hundred and fourteen square feet on each side, so the balance would be, that is left over, would be applicable to the wall signage.
Thank you, I see. So then, so then you're, in your illustrations, the roof sign's staying the same, it's just the sides of the buildings that are getting smaller.
Of the wall signage, correct.
The letters on the side of the, we're talking in code, the letters on the side of the buildings are getting smaller. Thank you. That was my question.
The total number can't, can't be expanded.
Right, and, and option six is, puts the whole project within code.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Shay?
Thank you. Similarly, the question that Councilwoman Kalani asked, I was just confused with the calculations, so I think you clarified that. The question I have, the, the planning commission, they voted five by two, uh, do we know what the other commissioner, what were their arguments, who did not agree with the, out of curiosity?
Unfortunately, Councilman, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. I just wanna know the argument what was given to us, but, uh, thank you.
Yeah, but I, I do wanna clarify that, there was an option for, uh, a couple of council, uh, commissioners did want the applicant to come back or to continue to work with staff with a continuance, but the applicant wanted a, an action that night.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions from the council? Councilman Macaji?
Uh, one other question for staff, it, for the, um, for the appellant, is, is the roof sign more important and significant than the, than maintaining both wall signs?
Uh, Councilman Macaji, I believe that, that would be a question for the appellant, um, that which are, they are present in the, in the audience.
And your, and your honor, the appellant will have an opportunity to speak following the council questions.
Thank you.
Any other members of the council have questions at this moment? If not, at this time, the appellate applicant will have ten minutes, up to ten minutes, to speak before members of the, before the members of the public can, before members of the public may speak on this matter. So I think the, uh, appellate applicant already heard one question, uh, from Councilman Macaji.
Top.
And, uh...
Top, the last, I forget, seven.
I believe the handouts are exactly the same as what we have, just larger sized paper, is that correct?
Except the last page.
Except the last page.
So the last page is basically what I'm handing you guys, that it shows the signage that was approved on Hawthorne.
I, I can see that, I know that, I know that street well.
Yeah.
Got it, okay. Um, when you're ready, we'll start the ten minute timer.
Good, I'm ready.
You could've started and gave us an extra sentence.
Well, thank you guys for having me, I'm Diego Bernalan with Sunset Signs, um, representing the, uh, the tenant, America's Tires. We're, basically they're doing a rebrand nation, nationwide, we're doing about, you know, close to thirty locations, Southern California, and increasing. Um, one of the main things that I wanted to point out is that the square footage allowed per sign, per wall sign is higher than what we're proposing. On the original proposal, the biggest signs that you see in option one, so on Torrance Boulevard, you're allowed a hundred and eighty square feet, the proposed sign is only ninety-eight point six four, on Ingraisia Avenue, the, uh, maximum allowed is one hundred and twenty-seven point five square feet, we're proposing in a hundred, you know, ninety-eight point six four square foot signage. The roof sign, I know there's questions about the roof sign, um, yeah, most cities will consider, would consider, consider that sign a grandfathered in sign, meaning that the sign, the only thing that is changing is the graphics on that sign. The square footage on that sign remains the same, untouched, nothing's going to change other than the graphics on the faces of that sign. The total allowable square footage for, um, that sign becomes, in my, my, my opinion, questionable, since nothing is changing on that existing sign that has been there since the seventies. Another, a- another argument, and, um, it goes with the, uh, size of the wall signs in comparison to the roof sign, in other words, a comment made about, you know, is the, is the tenant cons, would consider the roof sign being enough signage. Typical signage in a building, aside from a pole sign or a monument sign, requires a wall sign for pedestrians, people that are already in the parking lot, doing business there, the, the roof sign acts as a, uh, as a flag for automobiles, uh, cars, vehicles, people that are already in proximity of the business, um, you know, mostly just look at the wall signs. Um, being, uh, if you see an option that, that, that matches or fulfills the, the code, it looks really small, like honestly, just like, looks really small, and, and, and to say that it's not that noticeable, that it's enough to have the roof sign, I mean, it's going to sound a little ridiculous, but if you're wearing a suit, and you wear sandals with your suit, it doesn't matter that most of you is wearing a suit, you, people are going to look at your sandals, because they don't go with it. So same thing with a wall sign, if you have a small tiny sign, it's going to look very odd and off on a building this size. So one of the comments that was mentioned in the Planning Commission review was to the fact of the code being so old, and, you know, one of the members said, is there room to update that code since being, you know, just, since the eighties, um, hasn't been updated? So, another reason to, to look into that. There is, i- is this time for the presentation for us, I know the landlord is also here, might have a word, uh, would that be another set of time, or use this time?
Your Honor, traditionally, the appellant, all of the appellant representatives are within this ten minutes.
Okay, so the landlord is here, he, uh, do you want to, Jim, do you want to speak and say something? Yeah?
I represent the ownership, uh, I know it's been a tough night, I'll try and make a quick. They, we purchased this property in nineteen eighty-seven, and the prior tenants, uh, Goodyear, and also, uh, another franchisee after that, it's a struggle at that location, uh, in downtown, and I think having a corporate tenant down there is a real benefit to the community, it's a benefit to the city, and, um, they're providing a, uh, an essential service at a discounted price, and they need everything that they can get to have customers come into the downtown area. I know you might try and treat it as a, the old days and quaint and stuff, and that's, that's good, but, but they, they've got to be able to maintain business there and have traffic coming in there. They keep that building immaculate, they periodically repaint, slurry coat the parking lot, do the, um, uh, manicure the, the landscape, so they're doing a wonderful job for the city, the community, and, uh, and to have them restricted with an invitational sign, I, I think is, is, it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a burden on them, and, and they're putting a lot of money into re, 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 uh, modeling the stores. Uh, we have them in five locations, and, and all the cities really appreciate them being there, the money they put into these stores. At times, they've asked me to chip in, I do it, and, and we've done it there, and I just think that they're, they're great for the community, the city, and, uh, they're not doing anything wrong, but just trying to have the public come in and, and service them. And, and these, these restrictions on one area like the Hawthorne Boulevard Corridor has one, and then the old downtown Torrance has more restrictions, I just think it's, you're, you're hurting yourself by having some of these restrictions on downtown. Again, I appreciate people want to walk and keep it quaint and whatnot, but having a corporate tenant down there, uh, business is, is, is a wonderful thing. You mentioned logos earlier, that's all they're trying to do, is expand their logo, so that people will come in, they spend a lot of money on advertisement, in the paper and on the internet, and what they want to see is people that they, they recognize that, those logos, and this one that you have them doing now, it's just shrinking on the side of the, the building, and they're, they're not, they're not expanding the building, they're not expanding the size of the sign, they're not expanding the size of the building to fit more sign, they're using everything within the existing framework to just achieve, uh, some reasonable signage. What else can I say here, I've got some time, I can't believe it. I, I think that's it, I think that they're complimenting the community, they're complimenting the property, and they're complimenting the city on what you guys are trying to achieve, and you know what, I think downtown needs it, it can use it. And, and I'll tell you, the guys there before, they were there, they struggled, they really did. I mean, we had a franchisee in there that struggled, and they were full service, not just tires, and the good things about these guys is that they're providing, uh, uh, tires at a discount price to the community, and so anyways, hope you support this, and let them have their signings the way they like it, and, and I think everybody'd be happy. Maybe except for some staff, but I think they're doing you a good thing, thank you.
Is there anything else?
I don't have any further comments.
Okay, I mean, you don't have to use up the whole ten minutes, you'll, you'll, you'll come back later for a five minute rebuttal after some questions, just so, just so you know that.
Okay.
I, I do have a question for, for you.
Sure.
Um, I'm looking at your page one, where you show the old sign. And at each side of the building, I see the old lettering with the red stripe.
Correct.
I'm going to guess that the red stripes, where it ends, where the old, old letters were, is not changing with your proposal, it's still, ends at the same place, or did it change?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, so, so what you're verifying is, those red, red horizontal signs stay, uh, lines still end at the same place, where before you had one line that says America's Tire, and then now you just go with?
Correct.
Two.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I understand that, I mean.
They just repainted the building, it's all wide, and, and a new, very modern looking scheme, and they, they le, I believe they left that, that red, you know, the red line there, the way it was.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's not, I, I understand the staff is just following the, the, the regulation, I actually liked option one, actually, when I see, that's why I asked, because everything was there, you're just trying to, I know we're trying to use the quote-unquote grandfathering the existing real estate you're using, and I think that's where the, the pickle we're at right now. Um, at this point, I think we have some more council members who want to, uh, have questions. Do you guys want to ask your questions now, or want to let the public speak?
I would stay here to public.
And then we'll come back to you, okay? Uh, does, at this moment, we'll take public comments, each speaker will have up to two minutes, if you want to speak on this. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you, does any member of public wish to speak? Actually.
I can't do it, I can't?
Yeah, yeah, that's an illegal procedure.
Oh, it is, oh, okay, I don't mind.
Your, your party, appellate party, if you call it. That term just came out.
Yeah, I, uh, porch up again, I don't want to violate any rules either, I'd just like to remind you, this is again a typical, typical Torrance way. We have rules, we have regulation, we have regulation here, regulation there, regulation for them, regulation for other people. And here we have our beauty of Torrance, downtown Torrance is dying, but let's slow down this business, you know? Tires are very important, you know, but the signs more important. For you, seeing and putting up these procedures for, for a freaking sign, that's really shows your head is at the wrong place, you know? I'm, I'm not a doctor, but you know, I just suggest you could visit a doctor, you know, up here. From down there, I don't care, but from up here, I mean, a freaking sign, man, a freaking sign, wake up, America, wake up, City Council, a sign! We are here for a sign, but is this business want to make money, you know, and it's not a bigger sign than ours, you know? And your downtown Torrance is dying, don't pour more money in it from the taxpayers' dollar, bring more businesses who makes money, you know?
Thank you, does anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? If not, Councilman Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, if I can have staff, uh, quickly, I mean, if you can, quickly, do the calculi, calculations on this building, uh, based on the, uh, code outside of this special nineteen eighty district, uh, if option one would actually be within the guidelines of that, is that, is that something we can do? I'm sorry.
Councilman Mayor and Honorable Body and Councilmembers, if you'll allow me a few minutes, I can try to get that in.
Okay, you can come back to me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, maybe you could calculate while other people, I, I probably should give you a heads up about option one, but, my, my bad. Councilman Shayk, I, I don't know if staff could listen and, uh, and calculate at the same time, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, I have a question from the appellant, can I ask, uh, at this point?
You know, what I would suggest is, uh, oh yeah, you could, yeah, yeah, he's not eating his five minutes yet, so, go ahead.
So the question is, one of the commissioners recommended for you to work with staff, and come up with this, with, uh, you know, some, some compromise, why you didn't go to that route, that, you know, could have saved some time?
Candidly?
Mm-hmm.
We, we tried for several months.
To work with the commission?
Yes, and we went to the Planning Commission with the same kind of like, hey, we, what do we need to do to get this going? And it really didn't go anywhere, at the end of the meeting, we actually said, okay, what size do you guys want us to entertain? And there was no specific size given, hence why we started doing the ten options that you see in front of you, where we said, okay, just pick one, we will, we'll just put the sign in different sizes. I, I mean, we're at your guys' disposal now at this point, when I went back to the customer, which, our customer, which is America's Tires, they basically said, okay, we, you know what, at this point, there's no point of fighting the system, and, uh, and just go with, well, whatever they decide, that was basically what they told me. So, w- we tried, we tried for several months to work with Planning Department, then you went to Planning Commission, and at that meeting, nothing really got done, so we were back to square one.
Mr. Martinez, oh, sorry, uh, Michelle, can you clarify that, my understanding is that they only went to commission one time, and they were requested if you want to come back with a different, work with the CDD and see if they can come up with a compromise?
Your Honor, members of the City Council, yes, that's correct, Councilman Shayk, uh, the, I believe Council, Commissioner Rudolph, uh, asked the applicant for a continuance, if they would like to continue the meeting at the time, to continue to provide some additional options and come back to the Planning Commission. But again, the, uh, the appellant decided he wanted an action that night, they wanted to have a decision that night.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
I just want to make a comment, or it's common with the question, it's related to, I think the question, Councilman Shayk, you were former Chair of the Planning Commission, that I, I could see the pickle that they're in, because the staff in the Planning Commission, they don't make the ordinances or the policy. They're trying to do their best to follow it, so I could see that, uh, the situation got in, it's, the process is, come here to see if we could make, you know, changes or, or if you will, exceptions, so I, I see it's the, everyone's trying their best to follow the process, and that's where I think it probably landed here, but, Councilwoman Kalani.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I have a question for staff and also maybe the appellant. Would it change the ratio, um, if they put, instead of stacking the letters on the left, on the two sides of the building, on Ingraisia and Torrance Boulevards, if they lined it up like it previously was, does that change the numbers in any way, and then to the appellant, is that something you'd even consider? He's shaking his head no, so stacked or, or nothing, never, never?
Your Honor, and there was a council, uh, to respond to Councilwoman Kalani, uh, there, there, part of the issues affect, again, that there's a size limit on the letters. Uh, so even if they were to, you know, stack it, that could also come into play, or, or actually, if they were to have one line, it's, uh, at eighteen inches, it's possible they can meet that requirement, um, as it was previously met with the pre, with the prior sign.
My understanding, that's not an option.
All right, I think, uh, the council, I'm going to give you a little bit more time to, uh, ask more questions.
Your Honor.
Oh, I think you're calculating.
So, Your Honor, and, and members of the City Council, Oscar Martinez, Community Development Department, actually, just to clarify to Councilman Matucci, um, in the other areas, it's actually calculated by the, the area of the wall, so not necessarily the street frontage. So it's possible, I would need to have the dimensions of the walls here to, in order to provide the view with that calculation, because it's based on fifteen percent of the wall area.
Uh, does the, uh, does the appellant have, uh, dimensions of those walls?
So the, uh, the wall on, was it Torrance Boulevard? Would be sixty feet by twenty feet tall, that's the size of that wall.
Sixty by twenty.
And then, the one by the parking lot, the, what would you consider a wall, from top to bottom, or the signable area?
I believe so, I, maybe the staff can answer.
So top to bottom would be exactly, you know, twenty feet tall by, I mean, that wall is continuous, a hundred and ninety-three feet.
One hundred and ninety-three feet?
Mm-hmm.
So if we did the calculations based on twenty feet tall, sixty feet on the front, on the front along Torrance Boulevard, a hundred and ninety-three along, uh, the side street, would option one fit that criteria? I'm sorry.
If you'll allow me a quick second, Councilman.
I know, sorry. And it's what, you said 15, maximum of 15% coverage, right, of the total square footage?
Based on the dimensions provided and the code, it would allow to 759 square feet of total sign area.
And what do we have?
I believe 425.28 is proposed.
So it's well within, if, again, if this property were outside of this special district, it would well, fit well within the norms of what you would normally see around Torrance. Okay. And I think that's where, I think we're eventually, in my opinion, where we need to go, go with this, is that we may have to revisit what we allow along major thoroughfares such as Torrance Boulevard. I guess this overlay, does it go all the way to Carson Street as well?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, and Ms. Shaw, Mayor's Community Development Director, I believe it does. And I think one of the things that staff has been trying to do, and I think we did that way, by even, it was mentioned in the previous, in one of the previous items, is by trying to make the downtown Torrance area very similar to other parts of our code. And if that's a direction that the council would like us to look at, then that is something we can definitely look at and examine and bring back in a future state, if that's the will of the council for that part of it. But that still doesn't... You still have to decide as far as what to do for tonight.
Yeah. And if I understood the appellate correctly, America's Tire, the way it's designed, that is a registered trademark, they're not going to want to change the layout of that, just the dimensions of it as allowed. So I'm leaning towards approving, actually, option one, which is well below the norm for the rest of the city. So we'll call it an inclusive decision. But I, that's what I'm leaning towards, and also revisit our current code to be able to have, be more consistent across the city, so...
Council, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, Ms. Shaw, Mayor's Community Development Director, I would like just to add the caveat that because we're calculating this right now, and we're not able to look at the full code, you know, it is possible that the numbers we said tonight aren't correct. So I just, you know, I want that to, on the record, because, again, we're trying to look at all the different sections, and then we're taking for granted these size limits without actually having them on here.
No, no, correct. But, I mean, we can make the motion, if approved, subject to the actual dimensions of the building and subject to the actual code for the rest of the city, right? So in other words, approving is subject to. So in other words, if the square footage of what they're proposing in option one goes over that, then they would have to bring it down without having to come back to council, I would assume. They would have to bring it down to the, within those parameters. Would that be allowable?
Your Honor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you mind giving Michelle, Oscar, and I a quick minute to confer?
Sure.
We might be able to do a little bit deeper dive and provide the council some better assurance now.
Sure, go ahead and take some time, because I was going to ask our city attorney, just making sure that, process-wise, because I am wondering, since, if, you know, before they come back from their caucus, is, do we have an opportunity where we might just push this item for a future one, where staff will come back with a comprehensive analysis? You know, it all depends on the appellate willing to, you know, wait for another council meeting and come back, which, which may, you know, give them more flexibility.
Staff is really good, but obviously, they're a lot better when we have a little more time.
That's what I was thinking, and you heard my question, just, you know, I don't know if that would help, because I don't want you to come back and submit another appeal, but go ahead. Yeah, let's do a five-minute break, allow them to caucus, but let's make it a real five minutes, okay? I didn't say 15 minutes. Five minutes break. Thank you. Okay, we have come back from our break. I think there was a little caucus from staff, and anything to report out and share with us?
Your Honor, members of the City Council, Oscar Martinez Community Development Department, so based on the calculations and using some of the GIS aerials, we calculated the area to be 600, closer to 600 square feet for the allowable area.
640 square feet allowable?
600 square feet.
620. And the sign in option one is?
425.
So they're well within it. Okay.
To clarify that, though, that's not based on the code for that location.
Correct.
That's based on, for a code somewhere else in the city.
Correct. Correct. That was responding to Councilman Mutucci's question, I believe. Councilwoman Colani?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to ask just a question about the illumination of the sign, if there's going to be certain hours, if it's going to be on 24 hours a day.
Councilwoman Colani, I believe, my understanding is that it'll be on all night, unless it's on a timer, perhaps, if the appellate can clarify.
Okay, thank you. And then I just, I just want to make a... Go ahead. Oh, I apologize.
The sign is on a timer and a photo cell or an astronomical time clock, so it will be on during the night, basically from sundown until, I think, what is it, 3:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.?
Okay.
That can always be adjusted.
Okay, thank you. And in that area, there's no guidelines or ordinances against how long those lights stay on?
Councilwoman Colani, I don't believe that there are any regulations regarding the lighting of it.
Okay, all right. And I just want to say that when I look at the options other than option one, it doesn't, to me, look right. I appreciate Councilmember Mutucci having us go through that additional exercise. I also think that there's a reason why the ordinances are downtown, and I think it's important, especially when you're in the center of downtown. The fact that it is on Torrance Boulevard, I personally think potentially makes a difference. So I'm continuing to think about this as we, as we continue, and I'd like to see if any other council members have any thoughts.
Does any other council members have any more questions? Because at some point, I'm going to let the appellate to have their final five minutes to respond, but so far, we've been doing a real-time dialogue. I'm just going to pause for a moment, because sometimes a new thought comes in. Going, going. Okay, at this moment, the appellate, you have five minutes for a rebuttal. I'm not sure there's a rebuttal, but you got up to five minutes to make your last comment.
I think we've exhausted, kind of like, our, you know, presentation. What we're, what we're about is a simple sign. It goes with a building size. It's all about bringing customers in, bringing revenue in, making the building appear more welcoming, and as you bring more customers in, everybody wins, the customer, the tenant, the landlord, the city, the community. We're not trying to deviate from anything too, you know, that is not established throughout the whole city. This lands specifically on an area that is, in my opinion, overregulated signage-wise. It might have been something useful in the '80s. I mean, 40-something-odd years later, I think it's bound to make, you know, it's bound to be, a revision be done on it. Other than that, I think we've pretty much said what we needed to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. At this moment, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Unless, unless Councilman Sheik has a question before we close the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I have a question. The calculations that you guys are doing is because those letters and signs, the middle of the wall, right? If we change to the side, so your calculations are based on the entire wall, right?
Councilman Sheik, that's correct. It was based on both walls, so both frontages, it'd be the one on Torrance Boulevard, and then, again, using our assistant city manager with GIS, we calculated the area of the angled wall that faces Ingrasia Avenue.
Councilman Sheik, that's for what's allowed, and then you look at the coverage for the sign itself, and does that align with what's allowed?
So you're looking at the entire wall?
In terms of what's allowed.
Okay. It won't make any difference if we change this to the left or anything. It won't make any change.
It will not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to close a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
How does the council wish to take action on this matter? Councilman Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a very pro-business person. I'm a former business owner myself here in Torrance. I'm also a big fan of America's Tire Company. I'm a customer, longtime customer. I think they've done a fabulous job with their business and both locations, and I commend them for what they're doing, and I commend the landlord for supporting their vendor. But we do have codes for a reason, and in my opinion, unless we change the codes, we shouldn't be making exceptions. And my fear is, is that if we do make the exception based on the conference calculation, I can almost guarantee you that we're going to have another business come in and say, you did it for them, now you need to do it for us. And so if the council wants to change the code, I think that's something that they should consider and take up and discuss. But I don't think that changing the code for an exception is the appropriate thing to do. And again, I continue to support the code-compliant option. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mutucci?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve the design in option one, which is calculated approximately 425 square feet, which is below the 600 square foot allowable based on the rest of the city's sign ordinance. Now, this particular property has an overlay that requires them to, to maximum, I believe, 18, 18 inches on the...
Councilman Mutucci, that's correct. It's 18 inches for the maximum size of the letters.
Okay. So I would like to include in my motion to approve design option number one, a possible revision to our current overlay code, especially along major arteries such as Torrance Boulevard, Carson Street, and such. So that would be my motion, is to approve design number one at 425 square feet or less, if they decide to do so, with a maximum of 425 square feet, and also bring back an item at a later date for revision to our sign ordinance in the overlay. That would be my motion.
I second.
Your Honor, that motion carries. Councilmember Griffith and Councilmember Sheik voting now.
Thank you. Actually, city clerk, I think we need a number and title, please.
Your Honor, this would be...
Your Honor, this would be resolution number 2023-74, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California approving the appeal and approving a sign permit as provided for in Division Nine, Chapter 11, Article Five of the Torrance Municipal Code to allow the replacement of two wall signs and the refacing of a roof sign on property located in the downtown Torrance District Commercial Sector at 2026 Torrance Boulevard.
Move to adopt resolution 2023-74.
Second.
Start voting, please. Oh, hold on.
Hold on for a second. I gotta process check.
Sorry. Number two on the second, on the second page of the approval reso says it has to comply with the downtown sign standard, so we have to revise that. And so unless we want to do that on the fly right now, it's probably best to bring it back.
Patrick, Mr. City Attorney, would that be bringing back the resolution only for adoption, but the action would be reflective?
Yeah, the action was approved, but the resolution, which is the effective date of the action, will be done on July 11th.
Okay, so we do not need to ask for a number and title at this moment?
Your Honor, that would put the applicant, the city, in a better position.
Sure. Okay, so I think we are done with this item then.
Your Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, we, we could do, if we want to make it go forward, is we can change number two to state that the combined sign area of the wall and roof sign shall not exceed 425 square feet, and then that would solve that problem, and then we could move forward with it this evening.
If the motioner and the seconder would accept the amendment from the Community Development Director, that would let it go tonight.
I accept.
I accept.
Your Honor, that, that would work.
I think I heard a 100% accept, so let's go with the number and title then, with, with the modified changes.
Correct.
Your Honor, this would be resolution number 2023-74, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Torrance, California approving the appeal and approving a sign permit as provided for in Division Nine, Chapter 11, Article Five of the Torrance Municipal Code to allow the replacement of two wall signs and the refacing of a roof sign on property located in the downtown Torrance District Commercial Sector at 2026 Torrance Boulevard, as amended.
As amended. Move to adopt resolution 2023-74.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carries with Councilmember Griffith voting now.
Just want to say thank you, staff, for working through this. I know that this was a special one, and everybody's just following, you know, with the written code. This is really no fault of anyone, and I think that's the process is, is come back to us, and I think we, tonight, was an example of following the process through. We're now moving to item 10C from Community Development. Is there a staff presentation? Before you speak, I think I'm looking at the arrow, now is the time and place for a public hearing on Agenda Item 10C. This is a recommendation from Community Development Director that City Council conduct a public hearing regarding the five-year consolidated plan covering fiscal year 2023 to '27, and annual action plan covering fiscal year 2023 to 2024, approve and authorize submission of FY 2023 to '27 consolidated plan, and FY 2023 to '24 action plan, and authorize City Manager to execute documents. Has this matter been properly advertised?
Yes, Your Honor, yes.
Now I'll go back. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Julia Smith from the Community Development Department. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of City Council. Item 10C is a public hearing to obtain citizens' input and take public testimony on the city's five-year consolidated plan covering July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2028, and annual action plan covering the period July 1st, 2023, to June 30th, 2024. The city has been notified by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, that Torrance will be receiving $510,196 in home funds for fiscal year 2023-24. Additionally, the city received $1,710,939 in Home American Rescue Plan funds, also known as Home ARP, in fiscal year 2021. Of the home funds, 15% or $76,529 must be allocated to a community housing development organization, or CHODO, and 10% or $51,020 can be used for administrative expenses. The remaining 75% or $382,647 can be used exclusively to create affordable housing for low and moderate income households. Of the Home ARP funds, $1,639,796 remains for homeless assistance and supportive services programs. On May 9th, 2023, the City Council conducted a public hearing to receive input on the development of the five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan. During this public hearing, no public requests were received, and the city has not received any written requests. It is staff's recommendation to allocate the $382,647 in home funding towards an affordable housing project. This funding can be combined with other funding, including future home funding, for the creation of affordable housing projects that would benefit our community. No such project has been identified as of yet. This project could include affordable housing development, rehabilitation, construction, or acquisition, and would be brought back to City Council once such a project has been defined. Furthermore, staff recommends remaining Home ARP funds be allocated for a second outreach coordinator to assist with citywide homeless services. At this time, it would be appropriate for the City Council to open the public hearing and take public testimony on the five-year consolidated plan and action plan. Upon completion of the public hearing, staff would ask the City Council approve the Home and, Home ARP funding recommendations, authorize the submittal of the city's five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan to HUD, and authorize the City Manager to execute all appropriate necessary documents. That concludes staff's presentation. If any, there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. The City Council have questions for staff at this time. I don't see any. We'll now take public comment on this matter. Each speaker will have up to two minutes to speak. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, Your Honor.
Does any member of the public who did not sign up wish to be heard at this moment?
Hi, it's Andy Porchup again. It shows the government is a good government, give you money to do something with it, except I don't know how you're gonna have affordable home here. What is affordable home for $300,000? What can you buy here? And even with that other $1,600, and put it in administrative thing, and this and that, and blah, blah, blah. And how you used it last time, but I know, of course, you don't know nothing about nothing because everything is secret, you know? You bought a Torrance theater company, you were sitting on the money for 10 years. Actually, you bought that company and you had to pay the million-dollar back. So I would say that just do something with this money, but it's impossible. I mean, what, what is, what an affordable house would be here for $300,000? This, this is a joke. This is like spitting in the ocean and go grab it. You know what I mean? It's like nothing, nothing. $300,000? Thank God you can, you can spend it in administrative things, you know? So I just, I just can't believe it, you know? But take the money and just spend it on something, but I don't know how you're gonna provide, how you're gonna provide somebody, you know? Because instead of having the little, little village, you know, just buy a van everybody and, and go get a job with it. You can move or anything, but no, you buy a little $16,000 horse is what I can buy for a $1,000 at, what is it, Costco. All right.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public wish to speak? I don't see any. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to concur with recommendation of the Community Development Director.
So moved.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. There are no agency agendas. There are no second readings. We're now moving on to oral communications, number two. This portion of the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under Ralph and Brown Act, City Council cannot act on items raised during public comment, but may respond briefly to restatements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer to item to staff. Speakers on the oral communications are limited to oral communications number one or oral communications number two, and no longer than one minute per speaker. Speakers, please turn off your cell phones when you come to the microphone. If presenting handout to the council, please provide 10 copies. Are there anyone from the public who wish to speak?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to thank you on the vote for the signage that was, not these guys, but the lighting poles sign. And then I also wanted to give a shout out to the fire department because on Friday morning I had a issue, and I had to call the fire department and the paramedics, and they took care of me well, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I got to ride in a really cool ambulance. So I just wanted to thank them and say, you know, y'all are doing a good job. Keep up the good work and fight on. Good night.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, this is Andy Porchup again. I would like to thank the, the staff, and especially Mr. Chaparian, to stopping this airport, I mean, noise pollution with this flying object, you know, they call the Sling Pilot Academy. Me and my wife home 24/7, enjoying the noise every day, and, you know, I just would like to thank you to make our life hell because they fly above my house really low and really loud, and not just Sling, all the other six of them. And thank you very much to securing the Six Pilot Academy in Torrance and ruining people's enjoyment of their property and all the years.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who wish to speak? If not, I'm gonna go to the council. We will recess after you have your oral communications, number two. Councilman Kaji.
Thank you. In District One, we had a great community meeting. I wanted to publicly thank the staff who participated in the District One community meeting. I did hear back from some of the members of the community who were, who were present, and they found it to be very comprehensive. The information that they received was, I, I think, both timely and on point for many of them. And also to the members in District One, we're looking forward to issuing an, an e-newsletter to all those residents who have email addresses, so please feel free to send your email addresses to me, and once we're ready to issue those e-newsletters, we'll make sure you receive it via email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalani.
Thank you, Mayor. As we approach Independence Day, I was thinking about the meaning of the Independence Day and the freedom that it afforded all of us, but I also was thinking about the celebration of unity, where the 13 colonies came together as one. And then I thought about this evening, and the fact that it was filled with emotion and passion and probably, probably different opinions about things. Probably, I know, right? But I do believe that everyone here cared, and that's why they were, they were here. So I hope that as a city, we will continue to grow and learn, and, she's waving the flag, and, and sometimes heal, but most important, come together in unity to be better. So we don't meet again until after Independence Day, so I wanted to just wish all of you a good night and a happy 4th of July. Enjoy, enjoy your beautiful day. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis.
Thank you. You said most of what I was gonna say, but we do hope to see everyone at the 4th of July fireworks celebration, and just as a reminder, those are the only legal fireworks in the City of Torrance. Please be considerate of people who, who may not, may be triggered by loud noises and bangs, and that's the reason we don't want to do any fireworks other than the one we're gonna do. And then also, if you don't have anything to do this weekend, let's do Toca Palooza together. It should be fun. Thank you, everyone, and have a safe 4th of July.
Thank you. Councilman Matucci.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to, to staff. You know, it's nice like tonight that it just really shows how well you guys all work together, even when you guys are, you know, hate to say it, put, put on the spot. I didn't mean to do that, by the way, but it just, thank you, guys, and your knowledge and just willingness to, to work on things really shined tonight. So I just want to say thank you. And good night, everyone, and happy Independence Day.
Thank you. Councilman Sheikh.
Thank you, Mayor. Ditto, ditto, and ditto. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilman Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to look, will say I want to look forward to seeing a lot of our residents from our city at Dodger Day, or Torrance Day at Dodger Stadium on Sunday. And also, we have two concerts in the park coming up, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, so there's a lot of great stuff happening in our city, and as well, capped off by our great fireworks display here at the Civic Center. So everyone have a wonderful Independence Day holiday and look forward to seeing you on July 11th, where it will be, one of our big subjects will be the airport. Look forward to that.
Thank you. And I too want to wish all the residents a safe and great Independence Day, and celebrate our country any way that you wish. And at this moment, we are, the council will now recess to close session to confer with acting City Manager and City Attorney on Agenda Matter listed under 14A, Conference with Labor Negotiator. A closed session on this matter is authorized by California Government Code 54957.6. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. We have been in closed session. Acting City Manager, do we have any actions to report?
We do not, Your Honor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you as we conclude this evening's meeting. I want to thank you for your active participation and interest in staying informed. Your involvement continues to help shape Torrance and keep us moving forward. Thanks to Cable TV for sharing our meeting live. In case you miss any portion of this meeting, you can find it archived online at torrentca.gov, YouTube, and Facebook. At this moment, I'll take a motion to adjourn tonight's council meeting.
So moved. Adjournment to the next council meeting Tuesday, July 11, 2023, 5:00 p.m. for closed session, 6:30 for regular business.
Second.
Start voting, please. Your Honor, that motion carries. The councilmember, Sheik Apsin.
Thank you and good night, everyone.